Good evening and welcome to the Weekly Lawrence City Commission Meeting. I want to wish everybody a happy spring. A beautiful day, we've got a little bit of rain overnight, a little bit of hail, so it must be springtime. But anyway, I want to welcome everybody to the Weekly Lawrence City Commission Meeting. The first item on the agenda are proclamations, and the first is to proclaim the week of April 12th through 18th, 2015, as Lawrence Civic Choir Anniversary Week. And I'm going to guess we have a couple of folks here this evening. David, are you the spokesman?
Yes, I am.
Come on up the podium there, and if you give us your name, and tell us a little bit about what we're doing.
Lawrence Civic Choir was founded forty years ago, and we're having a large gala at the Lead Center on April 12th, which is the start of your week. We're very appreciative of the city providing us with this proclamation, which we will proudly frame and put in the program and all those other good things. I'd like to introduce some of the members of our choir who are here. We're very fortunate this evening that we have Tom Wilcox, who is one of the founding members. The other one is deceased, but Tom is a founding member of the Lawrence Civic Choir, and is not currently singing with us, but has up until very recently. In addition, Andy Parsons is heading up the Gala Committee, where we're at the Lead Center and developing all these wonderful presentations that we're going to have that day. Andy? Steve Eubank is our director, has been with us for eight, nine years?
Twelve.
Twelve years? Thanks.
Time goes by when you're having fun.
That's right.
Close enough for City Hall.
That's right.
And Jeff Wilken is our accompanist, and also has done a number of creations, new works for us, one of which you'll hear at that presentation at the Lead Center. And in the back row, various members of the choir. Terry Webber is on the Gala Committee. Jane Milstead is on the Gala Committee. Diana Ice as well, and I think that about covers it. So we are, again, very appreciative of the proclamation, and will make good use of it.
I think you should sing it.
Mike should sing it? Good idea, Bob.
Go for it, Mike.
I think not.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Please don't.
Stand up, gentlemen. Well, I'm very proud to be able to read this proclamation. I know David, and I know several of you personally, and very, very happy to be able to recognize the Civic Choir and what it means to Lawrence, Kansas. I mean, it's one of those special things about Lawrence, and we can't thank you enough for the countless hours that you all put in practicing, and the work that goes into this for, I am sure, the big pay. And, but it really, it means a lot to all kinds of people, not only in Lawrence, but throughout, you know, probably northeast Kansas and other places, I don't even know. But anyway, I want to thank you very much, so I would be happy to read the proclamation. It's a proclamation, "Whereas the Lawrence Civic Choir was founded by dedicated musicians forty years ago, and has been sustained through the volunteer efforts of innumerable board members and singers, and through the financial support of many community members. And whereas over thirteen hundred individuals have sung in the choir, and several of the original members still sing with the choir. And whereas the Lawrence Civic Choir serves the Lawrence community by performing masterworks of choral music, providing opportunities for local instrumentalists to perform, and by awarding scholarships to high school graduates. And whereas the Lawrence Civic Choir, accompanied by the Lawrence Community Orchestra, will present a grand finale to their fortieth anniversary season with a performance of Brahms' Requiem at the Lead Center on Sunday, April 12th, 2015. And whereas the Lawrence Civic Choir commissioned Jeffrey Wilken to write a song in celebration of the fortieth anniversary. The song is titled "One Out of Many", and will be sung for the first time on April 12th of 2015. Now therefore, I, Mike Amix, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 12th through 18th, 2015, as Lawrence Civic Choir Anniversary Week in Lawrence, Kansas. Thank you very much." And if I remember right, didn't the Civic Choir, you receive an award recently at the Arts Center? The Phoenix Award, yeah. That was very well deserved. Thank you all. Next item, now this is going to be fun, you need to stay for this. Free State High School Robotics Team Presentation. We have the members coming. Hi guys, how are you?
Hi.
Welcome to City Hall. Sure, come on in. All right.
Hello, we are the Free State Robotics Team, and then this is Wynne, and I'm Anna. We started the team our junior year in 2012. And with robotics, it's not just robotics. It's a huge organization called First Robotics. And First is a little bit, it stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology.
So last year, we started off just working in the classroom, the math classroom, and over time, we've slowly been going to the point where we now use our school shop, and we're able to build some really cool stuff each year. We spend most of the year just getting ready, raising the money, and getting the expertise we need for our six-week build season, and during that build season, we work really hard to build this over here, and then at the end of it, go compete against a bunch of other schools in Kansas City for a championship. So this year, the competition was, we were partnered with two other teams at random, and the three teams had to work together to stack crates on these platforms, basically score points. It doesn't sound too interesting, but it was actually pretty intense.
And so about our robot, we have an up-and-down mechanism. On that, we have a pinching mechanism. That is not with us right here today, because we have some things at home. But we could pick up the totes move that had to move around. We could also pick up the trash can containers. And if you notice, our really weird wheels here, you know how they have tiny ones? Well, they are not just going to move forward, backward, and side to side, but we can also clean sideways either way, and it is really, really cool.
You see, they're a little work.
Yeah.
So the robot here, it was programmed in the Java programming language, and has two game modes. The first part of the match, the robots drive themselves to score as many points as possible, and then it also has a mode where a human can control it.
The minor issue tonight is that we're having a technical difficulty with the wireless, and so you can't actually see it move tonight, but the light is on and it does run.
We also have a Facebook page, if you guys wanted to check us out. Instagram and Twitter. Yes, and there are videos on there with this moving, so it's not quite as cool, but it's what we can do, guys. Sorry.
Our competition was March 12th through the 14th, and we got third place out of fifty-four teams this year.
The actual competition this year was recycled rush, and we know that the City of Lawrence has looked into recycling efforts, and that was one of our exciting features that we liked about the competition this year, was that it tied something so closely into the community that was being discussed right now.
That's great. Well, no, one thing that I was going to say is I'm glad you explained those little wheels that are on the wheels, because that was going to be my only question.
Does anyone have any questions for us? Does it have a name?
Well, you've had a few arguments about the name.
It has a lot of names.
Last year, we placed tenth of fifty-four, and we had a really great season, or fifty-eight. We had a really great season, and our robot was named Jerry. So some people on our team wanted a name that Jerry Reloaded.
Some people.
Some other names were like Olaf, or Number Two.
Yeah, so we've made a lot of different decisions on the names. We never really ended with one name.
It's usually referred to as the robot.
Yeah, but last robot actually had the name Jerry, so yes.
Any other questions?
Congratulations.
Well, thanks again for bringing your robot down and sharing it with us. You know, the only thing that I can really say is to everyone in this room, you know, the robot's great, but this is about our future and these young people here, and the great things that they're doing to
Thank you.
keep us way ahead of everything. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Good luck. Okay.
They need to be sitting up here.
It'll be long. You know, a couple of years, they'll be eligible.
I'll still.
I'll be moving. That's great.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. And all matters listed on the Consent Agenda are to be considered under one motion, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that a member of the Commission would like to have removed or separate discussion? Jeremy?
I need to remove fifteen, please.
I want item number three for vote. Any other items on the Consent Agenda a member of the Commission would like to remove? Now wait a minute. Any items on the Consent Agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed? Yes, ma'am?
Number ten.
Number ten. Yes, sir?
Number nine.
Ralph?
Item six, C, D, and E.
C, D, and E. Okay. Are there any other items on the Consent Agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for separate consideration? Okay? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the balance of the Consent Agenda with the exception of item number three, that are the claims. Item six, C, D, and E. Item number nine, number ten, and number fifteen. Okay? A motion made for approval?
Second.
Okay, a motion made in second. Made by Commissioner Shum, second by Vice Mayor Farmer. All in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five-zero. Item number three are the claims. I would entertain a motion to approve claims to four hundred and fifty-three vendors in the amount of four million, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty cents.
Move, second.
Motion made in second for approval. Any questions or comments? All in favor, as made by Commissioner Shum, second by Vice Mayor Farmer. All in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five-zero. Next item are claims to two vendors on Rock Chalk Park-related items in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and six dollars and ninety-five cents.
Move, second.
Motion made in second for approval is made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. Any questions or comments? All in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Mayor Amix and Ascension passes four-one. And payroll in the amount of two million, one hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Entertained? Have a motion for approval?
Second.
In second. As made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Dever. All in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes five-zero. Items six, C, D, and E. Item six C is to award the bid on Bob Billings Parkway and George Williams Way, the geometric and traffic signal improvements to R.D. Johnson, the amount of six hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Item six D is to award a bid, Corpus Christi Benefit District Fratern Lane Improvements to R.D. Johnson Excavating Company, in the amount of two hundred and two thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. And item number E is to award a bid on Bob Billings Parkway, Foxfire Drive to Walker Russa Drive, pavement reconstruction, pavement marking, and sidewalk to R.D. Johnson Excavating Company in the total amount of nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty cents. Mr. Gage?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Ralph Gage. I live at 5021 Jeffries Court. In January of 2014, I was involved in efforts to organize a public meeting at Langston Hughes School, where the city staff provided us information about the K-10 interchange and other improvements planned for Bob Billings Parkway. One outgrowth of that meeting was the formation of a coalition of sixteen homeowner associations and neighborhood groups, people who live in the areas along Bob Billings Parkway. This coalition has been working to identify concerns about the street, and organized another meeting with city staff last month. The group's steering committee asked me to speak tonight and to present to you information about safety issues along that road. First, I believe it's important to remember that until it was renamed to honor Bob Billings, it was Fifteenth Street. It is not, and never has been, a parkway in the sense of Clinton Parkway. Clinton is a limited-access roadway. It has access roads and wide multi-use lanes for pedestrians and cyclists on both sides. Fifteenth Street, on the other hand, has no access roads. Instead, it has more than fifty intersections and curb cuts, serving businesses, schools, churches, condominiums, office buildings, retail facilities, the police department, KU Research, banks, retirement communities, and single-family residents. Fifteenth has no sidewalks in some areas, and in others, the sidewalk is broken and dangerous. Worse yet, along some stretches of Fifteenth, the average speed, the average speed, is nearly fifty-five miles an hour. Our group's paramount concern is safety for all users of Bob Billings Parkway. In general, we suggest that three strategies be developed. First, to decrease the speed of vehicles. Second, to improve access at the many intersections serving residential areas. And third, to provide sidewalks and crossings for pedestrians, and to improve safety for bicyclists. Our group has prepared a report, pardon me, outlining concerns about various locations along the route, and suggesting possible solutions. We appreciate the involvement of Dave Corliss and Chuck Souls, Dave Cronin, and other staff members. We support the agenda items before you this evening. They're welcome first steps. We'll continue to suggest and support further safety improvements along this road. It is our hope that instead of finding ourselves merely reacting to proposals, we will be involved in a proactive process with you and the staff to make this a safer roadway for the city's residents and other users. I'll leave behind copies of our memo, and the full report will be emailed to you and others. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Ralph, did you say that the full report is done now?
Full report is done from our perspective, and will be emailed later this evening.
Okay. Any questions, Ralph? Ralph, thank you. Other comment on this item? Well, Ralph, we appreciate the work that you and others have done to be involved in this process, you know, over the last year, and we are to this point where improvements are beginning, and I know that we'll have great opportunities to talk about other improvements in the future, so.
Thank you.
You bet. Thanks. Any other questions or comments? Okay? Well, without reading those items again, I would entertain a motion to approve awarding the bids to R.D. Johnson on the three items. City bid number fifteen thirteen, fifteen fourteen, and fifteen fifteen. These are all projects along Bob Billings Parkway, west of Walker's Drive. Move.
Second.
Okay. Motion made in second to approve item six, C, D, and E from the Consent Agenda, and awarding the bids to R.D. Johnson on those projects. It was made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Dever. All in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five-zero.
Mayor, is that a twenty-fifteen project or twenty-sixteen?
Those are going to begin this year, right?
Well, what we're going to be doing is soliciting input from the neighborhood, from the adjacent property owners, and starting to work up a possible plan, trying to get a good consensus. Some of that work might be done in fifteen, some of it might be done in sixteen. Last month, on the twenty-fourth of February, you budgeted two-point-two-five million dollars in the infrastructure sales tax. I think a little bit of debt, primarily infrastructure sales tax funding in our capital improvement plan, to do reconstruction work, and then hopefully get at some of the issues, recognizing that there's going to be additional traffic along that corridor.
That will be done in concert with some other activity there, construction activity as well, once we study it a little bit more?
Could very well be, Commissioner, but it may be independent of that as well. We want to try and get as big a bang for the buck that we've got in order to work on it. We're not going to be able to probably do the entire corridor as far as rebuilding and other things, but we can at least start working up a prioritization, and present that all to you, and get your direction.
Okay. Any other questions? Again, motion made in second made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Dever. All in favor of that motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five-zero. Item number nine then is adopted resolution number seventy-one oh nine revised, and we all have copies of that, expressing the city's opposition to Senate Bill 212 and House Bill number two zero nine six, which affects the city's relationship with employee groups. We have John Darling here this evening. How are you?
Good. Why, we have Local fifteen ninety-six has drafted a letter for city commissioners I'd like to read at this time. Mayor Amix, city commissioners, the Lawrence Professional Firefighters, IFF Local fifteen ninety-six, would like to formally express our appreciation and support for city resolution seventy-one oh nine. This resolution publicly and powerfully makes the case for non-interference in local affairs, beginning with a reference to our city's historic role in the fight for human freedom and equality. We are proud of the respectful and productive process the city and Local fifteen ninety-six have built together over the decades. Through this process, many issues have been addressed to our mutual benefit. In the end, this give and take has resulted in a highly engaged workforce who are free to pursue our true calling, a tradition of excellence in providing emergency services to our citizens. At a time when politicians in Topeka are attacking our very right to have a relationship with the city and distracting us from our mission, we are grateful to serve a community that values our service. This resolution strands a strong signal that the city commission values public safety, and I thank you for your vocal support on an issue that is vitally important to our membership. Sincerely and respectfully, John Darling, President, Lawrence Professional Firefighters, IFF Local fifteen ninety-six. Thank you all.
John, thank you. Just a question. Can we go through the same process like last year? Or year before?
Yeah.
Similar with political action committees.
Yes. I was thinking that, I remember the process, and it was either the mayor, Dever, that I think our strong message was pretty clear that local issues are local issues, and they should remain here. And, you know, I am, I, we have a responsibility to work with our employees, and, you know, we do that in a special way. I mean, to make sure that we understand the needs that you and your organization, and the folks that provide public safety, and all the services that the city provides, has everything that they need to do their job. And I know I for one, and I know my colleagues here share the same deal. We're very proud of the work that we do, and, you know, I do believe it's, you know, the message is quite strong. I mean, it'd probably be stronger, but that's fine. Local issues need to remain local issues. I mean, they really do. We work hard, and I know our staffs work very hard, administrative staff, making sure that, you know, our local decisions are here, and they're done in a very professional way. So we appreciate your willingness to stand up, along with, you know, other employee organizations throughout the state, and locally, and, you know, selling off on this item. So thank you for your service to our community and every member of your organization.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Public comment? Then I would entertain a motion that we adopt resolution number seventy-one oh nine as revised on three twenty-three fifteen.
So move. Carter?
Motion made in second for adoption is made by Commissioner Reardon, second by Commissioner Shum. Questions or comments? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five-zero. Thank you again. Next item is item number ten, which is the acceptance of dedications of right-of-way associated with minor subdivision. This is MS dash fifteen dash zero 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 thirty-eight for the Northwood Edition number three, located at three forty-five Florida Street. This was submitted by Grove Engineering Services, LLC. Yes, ma'am?
Hello. I'm Melinda Toomey. I'm the Pinney Neighborhood Association Vice President right now. And at our meeting last Saturday, I was asked to draft a letter regarding our conversation about this property, and we've just had some neighborhood residents come in and join us for this. I'd like to read that to you. Dear Mayor Amix, Commissioners, and Mr. Corliss, we want to thank Grove Engineering and Locust Tree for bringing development to the Pinney neighborhood. These types of infill developments, you know, they've been discussed quite a lot, and they can be tough to attract a developer. And we've had many different projects proposed and planned out at that location, and none of them have been able to materialize. And so we're really excited about the new plan. Neighborhood residents came to the march meeting to discuss concerns and priorities for the project from their perspective. Shortly, they are adequate parking, tree retention, green spaces, buffer. Regarding the parking, it's not clear whether those duplexes are going to have two or three bedrooms, and of course, that is going to affect the number of vehicles that each individual unit is going to have. So we're talking about six duplexes, up to three bedrooms. That would be eighteen rooms, maybe there's couples. This is looking like a lot of vehicles. And remember that those streets in that area of three hundred block of Florida there, there's not a lot of parking on those side streets. And there are issues with the healthcare facilities in the area, and adequate parking in the neighborhood in that area as it is right now. And so, again, that parking is definitely is something to keep in mind. Tree retention, we love our trees in Pinney neighborhood. And then green space as a buffer, with the new easements that have been requested, it's not really clear where those buildings are exactly going to fall on the plans, and we also need our green space as a buffer. So again, thanks to the developers involved in the project. We're excited to have some more affordable housing in our neighborhood. We just ask that those three things be taken into consideration.
Hopefully, we'll get you an answer on the process that it's going to go through. Tonight, we're just accepting the dedications of the easement. Scott, you want to explain the process from this point? Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner Scott McCullough with the Planning Office. This is the minor subdivision before you tonight. It is taking four existing lots to six lots in the RSO district. The RSO district is a district that permits duplex development, so each lot would, could accommodate one duplex or two units. So we could have up to twelve units. So we could have up to 12 units here. At this stage in a duplex development process, there's no site plan involved. It's basically forming the lots, and as the building permits come in for the duplex, a plot plan is required, which will place the building within this building envelope. You see here, we do show the setbacks here. In our determination report, we noted, the Horticultural Manager for the city noted that we had some quality oak trees here on Florida Street, two of them, I believe, that were working with the applicant to maintain and keep alive with placement of the sidewalk. And so that's a continuation, that process will be continued after the plat is recorded and infrastructure is placed there. Essentially, the application tonight dedicates additional width to existing utility easements and vacates 10 feet of West Fourth Street here to accommodate a little bit larger lot here, but does put in its place some utility easements there. So we don't know necessarily how many bedrooms. RSO has an occupancy limit of three unrelated, so it's reasonable to think that we could have up to three bedrooms per duplex unit, which typically would be accommodated in driveways from the street up to the structure. So the applicant I see is here tonight to expand on anything I may be missing about their plan, but that's the project from our perspective.
Okay. So then the space for the parking that would be on that lot would be able to accommodate three vehicles, you believe?
The code requires that each bedroom have a parking space. So whether that's two or three is going to be a little bit of a function of what the lot can accommodate.
Sure.
But on-street parking is not meeting the code, so it has to be accommodated on-site.
Okay. Good. Questions, Scott? Questions of Mr. Grove?
I'll be happy to answer any questions or any clarifications. I'll, Scott, glad to help.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your willingness to work and help everybody to make this successful. We appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Everybody in Pinney Neighborhood, make sure these things work. So thank you all. Thank you all very much for all your work. Okay. Any other questions then? Any other public comment? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to accept the dedications of right-of-way associated with the minor subdivision for Northwood Edition number three located at 345 Florida Street.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the dedications made by Commissioner Reardon, second by Commissioner Dever. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. And item number 15 is to approve a street event temporary use of right-of-way permit for the Kansas Food Truck Festival located, or allowing the closure of the 800 Block of Pennsylvania Street from 8th and 9th Street and the 600 Block of East 8th Street on Saturday, May 2nd, 2015, and adopt on first reading ordinance number 9095, allowing the possession and consumption of alcohol in the 800 Block of Pennsylvania Street and the 600 Block of East 8th from 12:00 PM to 11:59 PM, May 2nd.
Just food's a beneficiary of this event, so I'm going to step out while you guys deliberate.
I'm going to make him shut that door, and we can all just kind of lay back and make him sweat, right? It's probably a bad idea. Any questions or comments on that item? Any public comment on this item? Come on. No, just kidding. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the temporary street event use of public right-of-way permit based on everything else I said a minute ago.
So moved.
So did you second? Motion made by Commissioner Reardon, second by Commissioner Shum. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes four zero, and I assume one with Commissioner Farmer abstaining. Okay. Thank you all. We are on to the city manager's report. David?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the commission. Just a few items in this week's report. As you can appreciate here in March, we're getting a number of annual reports from city departments, and you have the 2014 Annual Report from the Public Works Department. I think you're very familiar with all of the good work under Chuck's leadership that was accomplished last year. Particularly draw your attention to the chart there on page 20 of the report that shows the age of our equipment. That's going to be a very important budget item as we start working on the 2016 budget. So there's a lot of good information there, and I would commend that to your reading. Got some information about the cultural plan that's underway. I had a meeting, I think, today, Diane, and we've got a number of meetings that are underway, so we're excited to seek citizen input and work with our consultant to come up with a cultural plan. So it's an exciting time in the community for that. Also, the 9th Street Corridor project, I saw Josh and some of his team here earlier this evening. I think they stopped by to introduce themselves. I think they had a meeting last night, and it was well-attended and good, strong participation. So that project is launched and underway, so we're very excited to involve the neighborhood and as many people as possible to make sure it's a great project for the community. Couple of months back, I asked Mark Teal to take a look at a bike repair station that I saw mentioned in a publication, and he took that and solicited a lot of input from the cycling community. And so we've got a little bit of a prototype out there by City Hall. We'll see about its use, and we're going to add it to something that we might want to try and put elsewhere in the community. So we're kind of excited to have that as a pilot project. Similarly, we're getting the news out, and Vice Mayor's pushing us to remind the public about the great news that we've got now downtown. We've got the recycling containers out. We're going to be doing a large education effort on that. Good teamwork in city organization in regards to that. Obviously, the Public Works Department has that as the recycling mission, but it's our Parks and Recreation Department that maintains downtown as a linear park. So we're excited to get that out, some of our push in regards to public area recycling. And then finally, we've just got a reminder here of statements of substantial interest. We'd like to do that this time every year to remind everybody to update those statements. Be happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Okay. Any questions, David? Okay. David, thank you very much. And the new recycle, they look good. Thanks. Okay, we are on to the regular agenda. We have a number of items on the agenda this evening, and we are going to be using our clock this evening because we have a great number of people here tonight, and I know everybody wants to speak forever, so we'll allow about three minutes per comment, okay? So if there's times that I see you're going to run over by a couple of seconds, I'll probably allow that. Everybody believes that, right? First item, if you do have a cell phone, I would ask that you silence at this point and pay respect to everybody who is going to participate through the public process. First item on the agenda, we do have a number of public hearings, and the first is we have to consider these individually, right, David?
I think it's good to go through it that way.
Okay.
Make sure I got my cell phone off.
First item is to consider, the following items related to the 2015 Rev It Up Hot Rod Hula Baloo. And we need to conduct a public hearing regarding a distance limitation waiver request for the 2015 Hula Baloo event to be held in South Park on Saturday, September 26, 2015, and find that the proximity of the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor for the event is not adverse to the public welfare or safety, and grant a distance limitation waiver, and consider approving a street event temporary use of right-of-way permit for the closure of Massachusetts Street from 11th Street to 13th Street from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Saturday, September 26, 2015, as well as the use of the parking spaces along North Park Street and New Hampshire Street adjacent to South Park. Mark?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Mark Teal, Assistant Public Works Director. The first item is for a street event to be held Saturday, September 26. The public hearing that you'll be conducting here in a moment, the appropriate notices went out to the affected churches, the 30-day notice of the public hearing. Also, notice of this commission action and of the event went out to the adjacent property owners as well. And you, I can, would you like me to reread the agenda item to you?
No. No, it'd be fun.
Stephen Cronister is here, the event applicant as well, and with that, the event basically is in South Park and will require the closure of Massachusetts Street between North Park Street and South Park Street. And with that, we'll be glad to answer questions.
Mark, is there any difference in the application between last year and this year then?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any questions, Mark? Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Any member of the public that wishes to comment on this item? Did you have anything else to add?
Not in particular. This is our fifth year, I think, we've had it downtown.
If we could have your name, just so that-
Steve Cronister. I think this is our fifth year we've had it downtown, and each year, we've raised around $7,000 or $8,000 for local charity, and this year, it's going to the Ballard Center. And it's just been a successful event to try to bring the community together downtown, brings a lot of extra commerce to the downtown businesses that day, and we've been real pleased with the way the events turned out. We haven't had any adverse events since we've had it.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the work. Okay. Is there any other public comment on this item?
Mayor, I move we close the public hearings.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing is made by Commissioner Shum, second by Vice Mayor Farmer. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I would entertain a motion that we find that the proximity of the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor is not adverse to the public welfare or safety, and grant a distance waiver, and to also approve the temporary use of the public right-of-way as outlined earlier in the comments. Anyway, that's all of that item, right?
Yes.
Okay. Entertain that motion.
So moved.
Sorry. Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Dever, second by Commissioner Shum. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. Next item is to consider items related to the 2015 Art to Go Parade and Final Friday Event, 2015 Lawrence Busker Fest Street Event. And we need to, again, hold a public hearing regarding a distance limitation waiver request for the 2015 Art to Go Parade and Final Friday Event to be held Friday, May 29 at 12:00 PM to Saturday, May 30 at 2:00 PM. Find that the proximity of the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor for the event is not adverse to the public welfare or safety, and grant a distance limitation waiver. The public hearing would apply to the 900 Block of New Hampshire Street portion of the event, and to consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 9076, allowing the sale and possession and consumption of alcohol in that block, and also consider approving the street event permit for the Art to Go Parade and Final Friday Event. Mark?
Mayor, good evening again. The two items are together because the events take place in the same week, and part of the events overlap in terms of their location, although the one event will end and the other will pick up from when that event ends. Proper notification to the affected churches was sent out 30 days in advance of the public hearing that you'll hold tonight. Also, notification to the adjacent property owners of the event dates, as well as the commission action pending tonight, was also sent out. The affected area for this event covers the 900 Block of New Hampshire in front of the Arts Center, and the garage there on New Hampshire will have access from the south and from 9th Street during the event. And as the Busker Fest will cover the east 100 Block of 8th Street and a portion of the private property associated with the U.S. Bank property at 10th and Massachusetts, and they have gotten their permission to do that. With that, Richard Renner with the Busker Fest is here, as well as Heather Hoy from the Arts Center, as well as some other Arts Center staff members will stand for questions.
Okay. Just real quick, Mark or David, do we need to hold separate public hearings on this, or are you running them together as one big item?
I think you should hold separate hearings because they're applying for separate alcohol permits.
Okay. So we'll go to that one in a second. Okay, so the first one that we're doing deals specifically with the Art to Go event, correct?
Yes, sir. The first items are for the Arts to Go Final Friday.
Okay. Any questions, Mark?
I don't think so.
Okay. At this point, I would open the public hearing. Is there any public comment on the, all the items that are involved with the 2015 Art to Go Parade and Final Friday Event? And we'll get to the Busker Fest in a minute. Any public comment? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing. Chairman, did you make that?
Bob did.
Bob. Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Dever. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed. I would entertain a motion to adopt on first reading ordinance number 9076, allowing the sale, possession, consumption of alcohol in the public right-of-way on the 900 Block of New Hampshire Street during the Art to Go event, and also that we have found that temporary sale of alcohol or alcoholic liquor for the event is not adverse to the public welfare, safety, and grant a distance limitation waiver, and that this event is to be held Friday, May 29, 2015, at 12:00 PM to Saturday at 2:00 PM. And then also, in that motion, is to approve a street event permit for the 2015 Art to Go Parade and Final Friday Event on those dates listed. Entertain all of that motion.
Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. The next item is to conduct a public hearing regarding a distance limitation waiver request for the 2015 Lawrence Busker Fest event to be held Friday, May 29, 2015, to Sunday, May 31, 2015, and to find that the proximity of the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor for the event is not adverse to the public welfare or safety, and grant a distance limitation waiver. The public hearing would apply to the 900 Block of New Hampshire Street portion of the event from Saturday, May 30 at 2015 at 2:00 PM to Sunday, May 31 at 7:00 PM. The action then is to adopt on first reading ordinance number 9077, allowing the sale and possession and consumption of alcohol during the 2015 Lawrence Busker Fest, and consider approving a street event permit for the 2015 Lawrence Busker Fest event for the dates mentioned above, and the event will be held in the 100 Block of East 8th and the 900 Block of New Hampshire Street in front of the U.S. Bank. Any questions of staff on this item? Mark, you have any comments on this item?
No, Mayor, I don't.
Okay. With that, I would open the public hearing. Any public comment on this item? Anyone?
My name's Richard Renner. I am the producer of the Busker Festival. Some of you commissioners may have gotten a proposal that I sent in via email. Perhaps you got that. Would now be the time for me to address that. Okay. Good. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I want to thank you for the time today. I'm going to read some prepared remarks here, so I can do this on my feet, but it's better I do it this way. I am a member of the Lawrence Cultural Arts Commission, but this evening, I'm speaking to you as the producer of the Lawrence Busker Festival. It should be obvious that the arts play an important part in the culture and business in Lawrence. We have established a cultural arts district, hired a director of arts and culture, and created numerous events to promote the arts. This commission has been very supportive and very deliberative, and we certainly appreciate it, especially all the other festivals here, too. I'm sure I speak on their behalf. However, I'd like to call your attention to an unmet need and suggest a possible solution. Presently, the option for a large public arts or cultural event, such as the Busker Festival, the Festival of Cultures, or the Free State Festival, to apply for financial support from the city is through the Lawrence Community Arts Grant Program, which has limited total budget of $7,000. While this program is intended to enhance community participation in arts and promote collaborative programs among artists and arts organizations, the amount available is too small to support large, community-wide events. This results in festival promoters, such as myself and the Lawrence Arts Center, having to make sometimes fairly large, out-of-budget cycle requests to the city or requesting support from the guest tax, event by event, to gain by substantial support. In the past, I have requested and received funding from the city guest tax, but I will say the requirements for getting that have always been a little fuzzy for me. And likewise, in making requests directly to the council, I'm an amateur. I'm uncertain in how that process and the rules go. So the large festivals are exactly the- So the large festivals are exactly the kind of events that present both visual and performing art and make it available to the public at large, expand connection to the arts through the community, and draw large numbers of outside visitors to Lawrence. For example, the Busker Festival has grown steadily since inception and generates significant revenue for the city merchants. The Kansas Tourism Bureau has estimated that our festival brings in over $244,000 in tax revenue with only a budget of $25,000. Finances aside, these events greatly enhance Lawrence's regional and national reputation as a city of the arts. The Lawrence Busker Festival, I'm very proud of this, is the largest festival of its type in the country. And all the performers know it, too. I would like to suggest that the city consider a more standard way of supporting these beneficial events by establishing a well-funded and well-regulated annual granting process for cultural events in Lawrence. I would also like to propose that a possible solution for funding and administration of this service, Resolution 7070, the Percent for Art Public Art Program, stipulates that up to 2% of all capital expenditures can be set aside for art and public places. It does not require that the art be part of the capital improvement project itself, although that has been how it has been traditionally used. This opens up the possibility of using these funds for arts and culture all over the town, including to sustain and enhance major festivals, such as the Busker Festival and the Free State Festival. The upcoming wastewater treatment plant is an example of a capital improvement project that could easily help fund an arts and cultural events or public arts program for many years. The Director of Arts and Culture could oversee the Arts and Cultural Events Grant Program, and the Lawrence Cultural Arts Commission could operate the grant competition, as it already does, for the Community Arts Grant Program. As the city's existing advisory board on arts and culture, the Lawrence Cultural Arts Commission is well-suited to work with the Director of Arts and Culture to develop and promote the new grants program, solicit applications, and select suggested recipients for presentations to the city commission for final decision. The mechanisms are already in place. All that is required is for the city commission to include the Percent for Art and Capital Improvement Projects at the bid stage, rather than applying it after the fact, as has been the practice in recent years, as so there are no surprises for the contractors. And approve use of Percent for Art funds in this way, as well as for purchase of city-owned artworks, as it has been traditionally used. Resolution 7070 has been greatly underutilized in recent years. I propose that the city commission reengage with this program and seriously consider creative uses for these funds to open up possibility for Lawrence to grow its reputation as a center for arts and culture. Doing so will benefit programs as well, including the city's interest in drawing retirees to live here, as well as drawing outsiders who will spend money in the city's restaurants, stores, and hotels. I hope you will consider my proposal to make, and to make your support for arts and culture in Lawrence, especially events like the Busker Festival, more sustainable. I believe embracing new ideas for utilization of Resolution 7070 can offer a solution, particularly for the recent increase in out-of-budget cycle requests for festival funding. I am glad to answer any questions and invite the members of the Lawrence Cultural Arts Commission, who are present, to join me in answering them. And I have copies of this presentation right here if you need them.
Any questions, Mr. Renner? I did a visit with staff yesterday, along with the Vice Mayor, in looking at your idea. And I think what we may want to do is have a study session sometime prior to the budget season starting, so next month, sometime late in the month. And we'll talk about this item, you know, at a greater length-
Sure.
-since it's not really an agenda item tonight. But we appreciate you bringing this to our attention this evening. And I think that if it's something that you can wait a month-
Okay.
-we'll discuss it at a study session.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this item? Any other public comments on the public hearing that we are having on this item? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing, made by Commissioner Riordan, second by Commissioner Dever. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Questions or comments on anything that we've heard this evening?
I visited with Richard, I don't know, it was a week or so ago, at one of my conversations with your commissioner events that I had at merchants. He brought this to my attention, and I think it's, I think it's a very, very innovative way for us to make investments in the arts and culture. Not necessarily that we're going to have a large piece of artwork out at the wastewater treatment plant, but that we could use, we could use, I mean, why would we want to do that? Exactly. Yeah. We could call it the number two. But, you know, we, sorry. But we could use this, we could use this funding to sustain some of these events, like you said, but also, there's a lot of art that happens in this community. And not only, you know, street art or performances or festivals. And I think this would be a way for us to not have to continually have these budget requests come back to us to administer those programs to the Cultural Arts Commission. Seems to me like a really fantastic idea. And I'm looking forward to having a study session to figure out, you know, the best way to do that and maybe engage in Cultural Arts Commission, as we talked about last week, to really get some traction with this. But I think it's a fantastic idea. And we've got some really smart people in our community. Richard's one of them, and I appreciate him bringing this to my attention. And I encourage him to write the letter and show up tonight and present it to us. And Richard, I want to say thanks for providing this idea. And I hope that, I hope that we can get some traction and put some, some good money towards the arts in this community, to put our money where our mouth is, since we're a community of arts and culture. This is going to be a great step in that direction. So, great job.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay. If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 9077, or adopt on first reading that ordinance, and to find that the proximity of the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor for the 2015 Lawrence Busker Fest is not adverse to the public welfare or safety and grant a distance waiver, limitation waiver, and that allowing the sale, possession, and consumption of alcohol in the public right-of-way on the 100 block of East Eighth Street and the 900 block of New Hampshire Street, and approve a street event permit for the Busker Fest Event on Friday, the 29th, 2015, to Sunday, May 31st, 2015. And the event will be held in the 100 block of East Eighth, 900 block of New Hampshire Street in front of the U.S. Bank. Entertain a motion for approval.
Mayor, I just want to add, you missed one, the approved donation of various city services. Make sure that's clear and that's acceptable to everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's the only thing you missed.
And we'll add that. Okay? So, sorry. Entertain a motion for approval of those things.
Second.
Okay. Motion made in second for approval, made by Vice Mayor Farmer, second by Commissioner Dever. Commissioner Dever, thank you. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you. Next item is items related to the Free State Festival. Again, considering a public hearing regarding a distance limitation waiver for the 2015 Free State Festival will be held Monday, June 22 to Sunday, June 28, 2015. Find that the proximity of the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor for the event is not adverse to public welfare or safety and grant a distance limitation waiver. We will be conducting a public hearing that, to apply to the 900 block of New Hampshire Street for the event, and we will consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 9073, allowing the sale and possession, consumption of alcohol on the right-of-way in the 900 block of New Hampshire Street for the festival, and to consider approving the donation of various city services to support the festival. And last, to consider approving the temporary event, the street event temporary use of right-of-way permit for the use of the New Hampshire Street from Monday, the 22nd, to Sunday, the 28th of June, 2015. Mark?
Mayor, this week-long event will be June 22 to June 28. It affects the 900 block of New Hampshire. Access to the parking garage will be maintained during the event. Excuse me. The next item, the next regular agenda item that you also will be considering, the tour of Lawrence also will impact those streets on the same day, but that's the next item. The 900 block of New Hampshire is a primary interruption to traffic for this event. Most of the other items with the event throughout the east Lawrence area will be off of the streets and then either on private property or on rights-of-way. Appropriate notice was sent to the affected church for the public hearing with the 30-day restriction notice. And notice of the event tonight's consideration and notice of the dates of the event was also sent out to the adjacent property owners. With that, the Arts Center staff, Heather Hoy and staff are here, as well as myself, to answer questions that you may have.
Questions, Mark? Okay. At this point, I would open the public hearing on this item. Does any member of the public wish to make a comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay. Entertain a motion to close-
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Motion made in second to close the public hearing, made by Commissioner Schum, second by Vice Mayor Farmer. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion then that we adopt on first reading, ordinance number 9073, allowing the sale, possession, and consumption of alcohol in the public right-of-way in the 900 block of New Hampshire Street, and to approve the donation of various city services and approve a street event temporary use of right-of-way permit for the use of New Hampshire Street from Monday, June 22 to Sunday, June 28, 2015, for the Free State Festival. And also that we have found that the proximity of the temporary sale of alcoholic liquor for the 2015 Free State Festival is not adverse to the public welfare or safety and grant a distance limitation waiver. Entertain that motion.
Moved.
No second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Schum, second by Commissioner Dever. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item is to consider the items related to the 2015 Tour of Lawrence, consider approving a request from the Convention and Visitors Bureau for the donation of various city services, and to consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 9097, allowing sale, possession, and consumption of alcohol in the 700 and 800 blocks of Vermont and west 100 block of Eighth Street from Mass to Vermont, including the intersection of Eighth and Vermont and the plaza area between Vermont's street parking garage and the public library on Friday, June 26, 2015, from 4 until 11:59 p.m. And the 7, 8, and 900 blocks of Mass and the east and west 100 blocks of Eighth Street from Vermont to New Hampshire Street on Sunday, June 28, 2015, from 11:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., provided the sale, possession, and consumption of alcohol. Alcoholic liquor pursuant to the city of Lawrence State and Kansas law, and consider adopting, approving the street event temporary use of right-of-way permit for the use of various streets on June 26, 28, 2015. Mark?
Thanks for saying all that for me.
And please.
Tour Lawrence is basically a three-day event. Two of the days impacted downtown area. In the past, the second day or Saturday typically impacted city streets and parts of the streets on the KU campus. This year, the second day has moved to Haskell University. Infrastructure will have no impact on city streets or police services. They have requested, as part of their application, fire medical services for the athletes in the event, there's an emergency during the event on Haskell. So, as well as Friday and Sunday. The other important issue with this item was there was some concern on the Sunday's course selection. There's been three different routes utilized in the past for this event. One of the first ones impacted a majority of Vermont Street, which had a negative impact on the, some of the churches in that area with their members being able to collectively get to services on Sunday morning without a lot of hassle. A second course that was attempted last year to coordinate with the Free State Festival impacted Sixth Street, which was also not a, didn't turn out to be as productive as we had anticipated, impacted traffic on Sixth Street, as well as the potential for traffic in and out of north Lawrence. So the course that was selected for this year is one that has worked in the past. It impacts primarily the 900 block. It's a figure-eight course, but the majority of the closures impact the 900 block of New Hampshire and Massachusetts Street and just one of, one of the blocks on Vermont near the library. So it maintains better access for downtown for not only the members of the churches coming and going to their services, but also patrons coming to the Tour of Lawrence and to the Free State Festival activities on Sunday morning. We did send out appropriate notice to the affected property owners, or the adjacent property owners for both of these events downtown. I think that covers it. Bob Sanner is here from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. If you have questions for either him or myself, we'll be glad to take those.
Questions, Mark? The only one that I was wondering about is we don't have to do a finding on the adversity of the sale and consumption of alcohol?
No. The locations for the consumption of alcohol at this event are not, did not meet the requirements to need a public hearing.
Okay. Okay. Any public comment on this item? Ms. Van.
My name is Stephanie Garrison. I'm the Front Desk Manager at the Historic Eldridge, and I just had a question about building access for our specific building. The map that we received recently would show the street closures proposed for this year affect every surrounding street from our building. And also, the front of the Eldridge Extended located at Eighth and Vermont Street. In the past, it's caused difficulties in accessing the building for guests and also departing guests with luggage in the morning on Sunday. So we're really excited about having the Tour of Lawrence downtown, and we welcome those activities downtown. But especially since we'll be sharing that weekend with the Tour of Lawrence and also the Free State Festival, we have concerns about our building access. And so I was wondering if we could consider a temporary parking solution or valet solution, which could potentially be after business hours outside of the post office and those spaces that are public parking spaces after business hours on Friday and then during all day Sunday when the post office is closed? So that we could post a valet and bellman there to help guests with luggage, and we can have access for a specific place to bring vehicles around. I think our main concern is that we will be busy that weekend, and in the past, it's just caused an issue. We've had to bring people all the way down the street, a few blocks away with their luggage, and then pull their cars out to the middle of the street to have them load so that we could get them in and out of the building. And we just wanted to make sure we were proactive with that.
Okay. Thank you. Mark, is there, what would we have to do to grant something like that? Would that take a specific request and public hearing on that item?
No, Mayor. I think all, this is the first that I was aware that there was an issue with the Eldridge or the Eldridge Extended. We'd be glad to meet with you this week and work out, work that out with Bob. We did the same thing for the Arts Center in terms of how to get people in and out of there and for their event, as well as into the New Hampshire Garage. So I'm sure we can land on a good solution that'll work for everybody.
Okay. How do we do that? And rather than, you know, have that as part of this one, you can work all of that out. Any other public comment? Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. Back to the commission. It's a big event weekend. Bob's bringing a lot of people to town.
Thank you, Mr. Van.
Yeah. Okay. Then, the items that are before us is to approve the donation of the various city services and also to adopt on first reading, ordinance number 9097, allowing the sale, possession, and consumption of alcohol on the various blocks and streets that were outlined from Friday, June 26, 2015, from 4 till 11:59, and that on Sunday, also on June 28, 2015, from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Any other questions or comments on that? And also to consider approving the street event temporary use of the right-of-way for the use of the various streets from June 26 to 28 on 2015. Okay. No other questions? I would entertain all of that motion.
I would move that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second to adopt on first reading, along with all of the other language, made by Commissioner Dever, second by Commissioner Riordan. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much. Next item is to consider adopting Resolution Number 7106, establishing a pedestrian bicycle issues task force. David.
Mayor, remember, it's the commission, a few weeks back, we presented you with a draft resolution to establish the pedestrian bicycle issues task force. Got a little bit of additional information from Sustainability Action Network. We also took your direction in regards to when the due date would be for the task force. You take a look at the draft resolution 706, you see that we're asking that the task force habits were completed by December 31st, 2015. We also have added under section two, as far as the scope of the work, and the scope of the work is fairly broad because they can provide other recommendations as they deem fit, but we specifically set out review the city's current practice related to practice, actually, I've got a redundant there, but to focus on pedestrian and bicycle safety for school-aged children, provide recommendations on this practice and possible improvements and prioritization and funding. So, we think that with a little bit of cleanup there, we've got that item covered. We did take a look at the comments from the Sustainability Action Network, and I know Michael is here, very much appreciate his, his work on that. We have gone through and looked at the issues that we have set out in regards to the possible items that the group could review. We also took a look at the draft that, that Michael provided. Clearly, you all can decide the number of people that should be on the task force. I guess we have a bias of having an odd number in case there's a contentious issue and you need to have a tie. I don't think there's any magic about whether you have 11 or 14, that's clearly your, your decision. At some point, you get a group so large that it's difficult to have a conversation. I don't think that's at 14, I don't think it's at 11, it's probably a number that is north of that, so you can decide that. And how you want to describe the individuals that want to be on there, whether or not they need to have considerable involvement, or whether they're advocates, I think that's something for you all to review and discuss as well. We do think that you may not want to determine what the, the name of any final board is, and I think in Michael's language, he's talking about an active transportation advisory board, maybe that's the best name, but I think you might want to let the group congeate on that and consider any number of different names in regards to that. We think that they need to look at the full range of city boards and commissions that might be speaking to this issue. The resolution we've drafted speaks to that. This resolution sets out, talks about the bicycle advisory committee and the traffic safety commission and the public transit advisory board, which you may want to have them look at other, other boards as well, and we think that we capture that in our language. So, that's some of our comments in regards to those issues. I think the key is to give us direction really on any type of names that you may want to look at, the size of the group. We think the resolution that we have before you attempts to get this started, and you all can proceed. It's important to point out, you all have adopted the 2015 budget. You did that last year. We've got some CDBG funding for some gap sidewalks. Next week, we're going to be having a recommendation to spend some of that money in regards to the cedar wood development there by the United Way Center in regards to spending some of that money on some of the sidewalk work. So, this group can obviously look at that, but what we think their greatest value is going to be is trying to come up with some criteria on how to establish where do we want to put future sidewalks, and how do we want to try and prioritize that in regards to the funding that you all would, would provide for that as well. So, those are our, our general comments, and we await your direction.
Okay. Questions of Dave? Okay. Thanks, Dave. Public comment on this item?
We're a team. My name is Tess Banyan. This is Erin Payton. Erin is our facilitator of our group with Lawrence Pedestrian Coalition. I wanted to say that this resolution is the first step in the right direction to ensure safe routes for all. Okay? This has been a bit of a journey getting here. We started talking to you folks about this about a year and a half ago. We really appreciate the work of city officials and city staff to get us to this point. We hope that you'll support it, and we also hope that we see all of you at our town hall tomorrow night. We have over 200 people, 200 people that want to talk about safe routes for all. And Erin is our spokesperson most of the time, so she's here to answer any questions you might have. Any questions?
Erin, as I told you, and best wishes on tomorrow night's event, and it should be a super time for everybody to be able to just have a conversation about, you know, safety, and that's good. As I told you, I'll be back after 7:00, but I'll head right there as soon as I get back, okay? And look forward to it.
Thank you.
Other public comment? Anyone else? There we go.
Which agenda is this?
Item number five.
We've got your correspondence there.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners Mayor Imix, Vice Mayor Farmer, and other Commissioners. My name is Michael Allman, spokesperson for the Sustainability Action Network. Thank you last month for considering our proposals and our perspective and wanting to look into this issue a little further to tweak things a bit. We feel that, well, looking at the resolution that's before you tonight compared to the resolution that was one month ago today, it's virtually the same document. And I, I realize that city manager has lots of balls in the air, that he has lots of personal items, that he's doing the best job he can, but honestly, I think on this particular issue, the commission has not been well-served. When I look back at last month's commission meeting, the mayor said the director, the direction to give the city manager tonight of a rewrite, rewrite of this resolution is to incorporate the items that Michael has brought forward. Commissioner Dever said some of the items, some of these are okay, some language is okay that he took out. So, give us a couple of days to get back to David with changes we might want to put in, and then he can forward that with, come forward with that. Then the mayor also said, have Dave, have to Dave any changes we want to make by Friday, that will give you time to rewrite and get back on the agenda. And then, manager Corliss said, he didn't get a chance to talk to me before last month, but he thinks he could do some wordsmithing and probably get a good consensus on it. I haven't seen any wordsmithing. He did try to get hold of me, although it was late in the day, immediately before spring break. He was gone, I was gone after that. So, what we have tonight really doesn't give you direction. It does not incorporate any of the items that you wanted considered from last month. I'd like to point out, first of all, that, that the critique that Mr. Corliss has provided focuses on the name of the task force as a transportation, active transportation task force. It's not the name. The name derives from the proposed function, and the function derives not from Sustainability Action Network, but from people who met various organizations, not representing those organizations, collaborative effort on the 21st of January. And this document you're looking at here is what that group of people recommended, not Sustainability Action Network. And the main item, as Carol Bowen pointed out on February 24th from the Pedestrian Coalition, the resolution you have tonight has no charge. What is it for? It's bicycle pedestrian issues. It's not like a task force for a sewage treatment plant, for example, or any other task force. This task force needs a charge, and as far as the group who met on January 21st is concerned, that charge that we feel is important, that this task force address is, right there, recommend the purpose, scope, governance, and membership of an active transportation advisory board. That's what people from the KU Bicycle Advisory Committee, Sustainability Action, Livwell Lawrence, Douglas Honey Health Department, all these various people from these groups, Pedestrian Coalition, we all agreed to this document.
Michael, doesn't section two of this ordinance cover all of those things?
Does what of the ordinance?
Doesn't section two, the scope of the work of the task force?
Of the current resolution?
Of the current resolution, doesn't it cover all of those items?
No, it covers the second one there, make funding recommendations. That is in tonight's resolution, but the main one, the first one, the scope, governance, and membership of an active transportation advisory board, ongoing board, and it's not about the name, it's about permanence, it's about year-by-year budget recommendations, not something that's a flash-in-the-pan, one-time task force. So, that's what I'm disappointed, that given anything else that has been left out of tonight's resolution, that is the key one that I think is the major oversight. Beyond that, you know, we, we feel it's very important that walking and bicycling will be primarily regarded as transportation. That's why we feel that the membership, and it could be 14, there's 14 on the 9th Street Citizens Advisory Committee. The mayor is 15, that's a tiebreaker. 14 is a workable number, but they need to be advocates because so far, we've had lots of emphasis on recreational bicycling. Most of the funding through Parks and Recreation, and KDOT has gone for recreational bicycling. We're talking about transportation, auto, motor vehicles.
Michael, your time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have six minutes.
So, the whole idea of a line item from last July is a non-motorized budget line item. So, we think this task force should be advocates of non-motorized transportation, that's the whole point.
Okay.
So, sorry to go on so long, but thank you. And thank you, David. I mean, I understand that you're trying to get this moving forward, you want to get things done. I want more than a baby step. Thank you.
Thanks. Other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay. Back to the commission then. It seems to me that, as was suggested by the earlier speakers and the Safe Routes, that there's been a lot of consideration, you know, being able to meet the needs of both pedestrian and bicycle issues throughout this entire resolution, you know, and it does go into the step of provide other recommendations, including recommendations for sustainable funding. I mean, it's a long-term deal, I, I must be missing a lot here, but I, I just think that there's a number of things that have been taken into consideration, and you know, whatever the number it's going to be, and I really, I don't care, Michael, if it's 14, I mean, if, if, you know, that's fine, we just got to find the people to be able to serve, and I'm sure we'll be able to, that's not a problem. But I think that there's a lot of, a lot of hard work that's going to happen under the scope of work of this task force. Jeremy, you had a question?
First of all, you get too many people on the bus, and it gets hard to figure out where you're going. 14, in my opinion, is too many people. Secondly, I think the advisory board should discuss their own name and make a recommendation to us. And, and in relationship to the other things that Michael, you know, said where he doesn't want just a baby step, I don't want to delay this anymore, and, and I think it's just a tad bit disingenuous to come up here and continue to harp on putting this off another week and making changes and that sort of thing. We got to get this moving, and there's a lot of momentum in this community for this. There's going to be a lot of public conversation, a lot of public input. Robert Ping is here from Portland, Oregon, he's going to be at the Safe Routes for All Town Hall tomorrow night. Got a chance to, to meet with him last night. I'm excited to hear what he has to say. You know, there, there's one person who has a problem with this resolution, and that's Mike Allman, and one person is not going to dissuade me from making a recommendation that we move forward with it tonight. I chatted with Bonnie Uffman last, last week. I chatted with Chris Tilden and Charlie Bryan last night. It would be really great for us to have this resolution passed and on the books after first reading to celebrate tomorrow night, that Safe Routes meeting, and I think this is the best possible thing that we can do to show the community that we want some significant momentum around this issue, and, and they, they may come back, the, the group may come back and they may say, you know, we, we want to be charged to, you know, do these six things. I mean, I think that, you know, the issue is that, one of the things that I'm going to say on Wednesday at the, the Safe Routes for All meeting is, good can't become the enemy of, of, or the best can't become the enemy of the good. We, we've not gotten to this position where we are overnight, and we're not going to fix it overnight. We're going to have to take some incremental steps, we're going to have to continue to make progress, have some smart, smart goals, specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely goals over the course of the next year, five years. I'm proud of the, the money that, you know, we've put towards this. Dave Cronin sent me a spreadsheet today, I included it, Erin, in my answer to you, in an email that I sent you today. I mean, we have, we have made some big-time progress on this issue, irrespective of whether or not it's been a budget line item. We have, we have spent millions of dollars, it's safe to say, millions of dollars in the last five years addressing non-motorized transportation. And so, so I'm really excited about moving this forward, and, and I'm excited about passing this resolution tonight. Again, I think 14 people is too many, I think 11 is the right number, and I think that we need to let the task force name itself. I feel like they will come up with, I don't want us to tell them what we want them to do, nor do I want that group to come back with, you know, 99 recommendations. I think there needs to be some specific direction that we give to that group, whether that's Mayor, you and I sitting down with that group and having a conversation with them and providing some recommendations to them, or whether we have a study session with the new commission when it gets seated in, in the second week in April. Regardless, I'm incredibly excited about all the momentum and really looking forward to Robert's remarks tomorrow night, and hoping that we can get this done, hoping we get, hoping we can get this done tonight.
When I listen to Michael, I think a lot of the things that he says makes sense, but one of the things that I have found in the last two years as a city commissioner is that democracy is very slow. It's very effective many times, but it's very slow, and many times, baby steps. And when I look at this, I think if we had one person doing it, I think Michael would be absolutely right, but I don't think that's the way democracy works, and I don't think that's the way our city works. So, I feel very comfortable with the fact that this adequately tells this task force what we are looking for them to do. It does take time, but to do things right, it takes time. So, I feel very comfortable with this resolution. As far as the number, I don't have prob, really, myself have problems with 14. If you have an eight to, seven to seven vote, you probably shouldn't pass it anyway because there's not, there's, there's too much difficulty with that, and there's no sense of what we should be doing. So, whether it's eight to six, or, you know, nine to five, you want, you want a majority of the people, and I, so I don't have problems with that. I, I would be open to 11, but at the same time, there's some reasons to go 14. So, I could, I could support either 14 or 11, but 14 seems to make sense to me, to, to make sure we have a good cross-section of the community.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mayor?
Bob?
Yeah, I, I've been to a number of pedestrian meetings and talked to bicyclists, and I really probably am one of the reasons that they may be here tonight, because I really pushed to have this group get to the task force stage. Seems like year in, year out, we're seeing more and more. Seems like year in, year out, we're seeing more and more requests for activity, uh, non-motorized activity, and more opportunity for that, those people who enjoy that, uh, enjoy and/or need to use bicycle paths, sidewalks, to get here and there, to work and school, as well as for recreational purposes. So it, it seemed only realistic that we try to get everybody, as many people as possible, under one tent and come out with a, a workable plan. Right now, as we've all know, we don't have a very good program for fixing sidewalks or connecting sidewalks that, that don't exist, and we don't, we have, uh, incremental, uh, options and activity on bicycle paths, but it seemed to me like we need an overall plan, uh, which addresses as many things as possible. And specifically, what we could look to the future for is, is a renewable funding source. I think that's the real key to all this, is that we need to have some idea of what we're talking about. So that's, that would be what the task force needs to get their arms wrapped around, is, is what the scope of work is going to be. Prioritize that, come up with a dollar amount and say, here's, here's what we're looking at, uh, here's, here's what we need, each year in some kind of renewable, uh, renewable dollars that we can, we can start to make headway with. That's the same thing we've done with our infrastructure on streets, is that when we passed the sales tax, we started to identify, uh, different streets that needed reconstruction, rebuilding, and we've made a real dent in it. We have that renewable resource each year, at least until 19 or 18, whenever that goes off. And, and that's made a, a real difference in terms of, uh, our infrastructure and transportation. We need to do the same thing for the pedestrians, the bike riders, and, and the people who would like to use the facilities. Granted, we've done a lot in combination of rebuilding, uh, streets with complete streets. We've put in new sidewalks and bike lanes, but we've still got a, a huge gap in what is needed at this time and what we are able to do. So the funding source is going to be the number one key in what the, uh, task force has to reconcile with. It seems to me like an advisory board, after this task force is, completes its work, is that automatically, they will, they will recommend that a, an advisory group be set up such that it's ongoing. And why wouldn't you if you identify and request a need for sustainable money each year? You just want to have that. And hopefully, we can meld into this advisory group, the many different interests that are out there, so that we have one omnibus group that speaks for the different parts of this equation that are out there, the different interests, and so that we can, we as a city commissioner then can understand that this is the program. It's not the program from this group, and this group, and that group, but it's, this is the program we need to consider. That helps us when we go into funding, trying to, trying to understand what we need, and, and to be able to deliver that service to the body that speaks wholly for the group of enthusiasts. So, um, I've covered a lot of stuff here, and I, I think most of that's involved in the, uh, resolution. One of the things I might add is that we, we may want to, having been on a couple task force forces, uh, we may want to have the idea that we could extend the task force life by an additional 60 days if they don't meet their, their 1231 deadline. I think this is a ton of work to do, uh, and to get all that done in a comprehensive manner, and with a nice neat booklet to present to the, the governing body by December 31st is going to be a real challenge. It just seems like it could go on a lot longer than what December 31st deadline states. I mean, realistically, you're not, you're not going to get started until probably May and, and in erst, and then by the time you start digging into a lot of best practices and research, it's going to take a long time to, to try and come up with a, a plan that works for us. So we may want to include in that, uh, additional 60-day, uh, extension, so that we don't run into trouble and people feeling like they have to finish up a plan right away when they're not ready to do that. So that would be one suggestion I'd make.
Okay.
Other than that, I'm really happy that we're at this point now, and I really think it's badly needed in the community. And, uh, I really am very supportive of all, of all the interests that, uh, will be involved in this task force.
Mike, did you have anything?
No, that's great. I agree with Bob.
Yeah, I, uh, Bob and, and others, I appreciate your comments. I, you know, one of the biggest things that I think that is important as we look at the, uh, the scope of work that's going to be done by the task force is we're going to have a, a community discussion, uh, on, uh, the maintenance responsibilities that, uh, concern sidewalks. I mean, we've had numbers of people that come before us and have talked about, uh, you know, the, uh, number of sidewalks throughout the community that are in bad condition, and you know, who's responsible for taking care of that? And we always have the same line about, well, it's the property owner's responsibility to take care of the maintenance and, and, uh, construction of, of sidewalk, uh, issues there. And I think if we can have this community discussion, and that we can have a way to talk about if, uh, it's going to change, or we're going to suggest change and, and come out of such a way, I think that funding issue is going to be big. And we did have that discussion a couple weeks ago, uh, about, um, you know, we are going to have our infrastructure issue come before us, uh, you know, and, and 2019 is quicker than one might think. But to have that discussion, if we look at, um, uh, diff, different transportation and infrastructure responsibilities and, and improvements, and, and is it appropriate to consider that extension as we go back to voters to ask for that pot of money to be used on a lot of these improvements for the infrastructure? Quite honestly, I think it's an appropriate use, and one that, you know, I could support, and, and it does make a lot of sense. But, you know, we're going to have a task force that's going to do all of that work. So that's, uh, the best part of this. Jeremy, I do believe it's important to, uh, adopt this, uh, this resolution tonight, establishing the task force, especially in light of, uh, the work that's been done, on all the work, uh, everybody that's involved with the Safe Routes program, uh, before tomorrow night. And so I'm very supportive. Let's, let's begin. The, um, the language, and Bob, I do appreciate it, and I, I would like to add that language that if the deadline is not met, that the governing body can, uh, approve an extension, or the task, task force can request an automatic extension for 60 days to finish their work. The, uh, comments about the 11 versus 14 members as were recommended by Mr. Alman. Jeremy, you strongly believe in the 11 is, is the appropriate number. Anybody have really any feeling on that one?
I'm, I'm, oops, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bob.
I'm, I'm okay with the 14. I mean, there's a lot of different groups involved in this, and I'd like to see fairly good representation from each group that, uh, that has, that is really a stakeholder. And I don't have the list right in front of me, but it seemed like the city staff had, uh, identified, uh, I'm trying to find it right now, but, uh, a number of organizations that, uh, would, would have an interest in terms of, uh, of being on this board, or this task force. So, I mean, there it is, right there, okay.
Well, Mr. Alman's, yeah, correspondence. Magic.
Oh, that's right, okay. I know, I saw it, and I saw it also in an earlier draft from the city.
The language that we have in the resolution says that the mayor will appoint, uh, shall have an interest, or the 11th citizen shall have an interest in the, in the subject of pedestrian and bicycle issues within the community, and then that the mayor shall appoint members to, of the task force upon final approval of the commission. Do we want to spell out specifically in this, uh, resolution where, uh, suggested by Mr. Alman, or some combination of, of those items, uh, or those organizations, so that they have to come from some, some organization and recommended by an organization?
The resolution isn't super-specific.
That's what I mean. It, it just says that somebody has an interest in pedestrian and bicycle. You know, language like this would at least, um, you know, you would have a different group that you would be getting some, somebody to stand up and serve. What do we think of that?
Having that list specifically, if we go to 14, I don't.
Well, you know, some.
I think that that's a good list.
Yeah.
Do you have a number of staff there? We usually don't serve on the task forces.
Yes. Staff. Just looking at it.
This, can I ask Michael Alman a question, please?
Please.
Hey, Mike, would you come up to the podium, please? When you say that this was, uh, important, uh, sorry. But anyway, basically, you, you said that this was a collaborative effort from all the interested parties that drew up what your statement is on the, uh, on the screen there. Was that from that list, list of 14? Are those the people who drew it up?
No. No. This here is the list of the people that attended that, that meeting.
Oh, okay, in the first paragraph.
Now, they're not necessarily representatives of those groups, but there's some of the forward thinkers of all these groups on these particular issues.
So is it your, is it, is it the stakeholders' group's desire to have one from each one of those 14 classes be a member of the task force?
Yes.
So we have one from, reading from 14 to 13, you'd have one from the Lawrence Public Schools, one from the Public Works Department. But how, we don't want staff members as members of the task force, right? Your decision, Commissioner.
We didn't know better.
Well, you could, you, like on number 12, Lawrence Parks and Recreation, you could have a, a advisory board member from that group be on this. I mean, that, that would be something, uh...
Yeah, I think it'd be good.
I mean, I think the number, if we remove staff as, I mean, Lawrence Public Works Department.
And you have the police department.
I mean, I mean, we can ask for they can be a part of it, but I don't know if they need to be a part of, I mean, if you remove those, we're back down to 11 again.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could be.
So I would, the staff members would be at large and just kind of there as...
So ex officio, and then non-voting, and then, okay, I mean, that's...
For guidance, so let's just go with that.
Maybe that's, maybe that's the way you do that, but I, I don't like to have the staff members have to be involved in the vote because then it...
No.
It's not a, a good situation. I certainly think we need staff members there to provide information and, and strong technical support, but to have them as the member of the committee itself, it's not, it's not in the best interests of the staff, I don't believe.
Yeah, our, our group just included those names, brainstorming as providing expertise that the task force could run, but we didn't differentiate staff to, you know, citizens.
So then let's do this. Do we believe that this list is an appropriate list to, uh, fill the, um, positions on the task force, and that we would make the, um, individuals from staff as an ex, ex officio member?
May I suggest that we use this guy? We sit down, we, we remove the members of staff and/or an appointment from that staff level department in lieu of what he suggested, and then come up with a final list, and then, um, submit it for review, and put it on the consent agenda for kind of a general, because I think...
That'll work.
For us to nail down this, now that we've got staff members on there, it'd be difficult. Plus, we have five other items to do this evening, and...
Yeah.
It's 7:30, so, um, I would like to have time to actually think clearly about that if possible. If we're, if we're going to remove staff from the list, and Jeremy mentioned he wanted 11, Bob said he's good with 14, we remove the public officials from it, and...
You're at 11.
I think we're pretty close to 11, but I want to make sure.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, so then, let's do this. We'll go ahead and, uh, we'll come up with that membership list, uh, and where they're going to come from, using this as a template, uh, basically on, on coming up with a task force membership. Uh, but we'll go ahead and proceed with the adoption of the resolution. Okay?
Because you really got, I, I looked at it quickly, it looks like there's eight staff positions out, out of the 14 there.
Yeah, or, and then, like you said, some advisory board member might be a good idea for wherever, if there are any of those, so that's why I want to...
11 is fine with me, and then still maintain the staff position for the expertise.
Okay. That's fine. Okay, then, uh, the item before us then is to go ahead and adopt Resolution Number 7106, and, uh, we will come back with a list of, uh, the recommended, uh, membership, uh, list, uh, as a consent agenda item over the next week or so. Okay?
Perfect.
Okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion then to adopt, uh, Resolution Number 7106, with the caveat that we will come back with that membership list in a week or so. Okay?
Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Shun, second by Commissioner Greerden. Questions or comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Okay. Next item. And these are to consider the following items related to the Dwayne Peasley Technical Training Center Incorporated. First is to... When the items that we have before us is consider a request for reimbursement of a portion of the 2014 property taxes, consider a request for $500,000 to support the Peasley Center renovations, and consider a request for a loan up to $150,000 for the Lawrence Workforce Center renovations, and to consider a request for a building permit and industrial revenue bond application fee waivers, and also to receive a request for the IRB financing for the purpose of assessing sales tax exemption certificate for the renovation, and refer this request to the Public Consent Review Committee. So, Hugh.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Amix, Commissioners. I'm Hugh Carter. I'm the Vice President of External Affairs for the Chamber of Lawrence, Kansas, and joining me here in a bit for part of this presentation will be Marvin Hunt, the Executive Director of the Dwayne Peasley Technical Training Center. It's been my honor and privilege to serve as sort of the point person for this important community initiative on behalf of the Chamber of Lawrence, the Economic Development Corporation of Lawrence and Douglas County, the City of Lawrence, Douglas County, Unified School District 497, local industry, and private citizens. This initiative is to fill the long-identified need for technical training in our community. We, as Mayor Amix just pointed out, we have four action items, and, and one that will be picked up, I think, Thursday by PERC, and then maybe on consent agenda. So with that in mind, I'm going to be as brief as possible. I know you've got a very long agenda this evening, and appreciate you fitting us in before mayor goes out of town next week. Although I've met with each of you at length to review the details and all the moving parts and of this project that's been going on for 16 months, um, I will try to touch on the highlights for the public's benefit while, while moving things along here, so... Excuse me while I pull this up. Okay. So the property in question up there, um, in January of 2014, the Economic Development Corporation of Lawrence and Douglas County, I'm going to refer to that as the EDC going forward, purchased a 77,000-square-foot industrial building at 2920 Haskell Avenue to house a future technical training facility. If you can follow the mouse, the building I'm on right now is the former King Radio Building. It is, uh, the future home of the Dwayne Peasley Technical Training Center. This property, 2920 Haskell, I'm, I'm going up and along north here on Haskell Avenue, south to 31st Street, bless you. So 31st and Haskell right here. Now, as part of the SLT being completed, Haskell has been realigned, and so Haskell now comes down and jots over this way, which makes this now approximately a 17-acre, 17 and a half acre parcel here. I'll get into how this has, uh, changed over time. Just prior to purchasing the facility, the Unified School District 497 had received a resounding, uh, approval for their bond initiative, which included funds to construct a college and career center for technical training of high school students. As part of the Economic Development Corporation's purchase of this, uh, facility, the owners of the facility, Roger Henry and Jeffrey Morrison, made a $750,000 donation of land to the school district. made a $750,000 donation of land to the school district to encourage them to co-locate the new college and career center immediately adjacent to what will be the Dwayne Peasley Technical Training Center. So this seventeen acre lot, now I'm going to go and show you the dividing line right here. This is the dividing property line. So the school district has this approximate eleven acres here, and then the Economic Development Corporation purchased this six and a half acres here, including the building that exists. This is a depiction of the new college and career center, which would be immediately to the kind of northwest of the Peasley Center. And this area down below is where that college and career center potential future expansion could take place. The Peasley Center... Or, excuse me, the Economic, the EDC decided to name this facility after Mr. Dwayne Peasley. Dwayne was a longtime technical training advocate, a chamber board member, a community leader, and a union representative with plumbers and pipe fitters. Another contributing factor in the decision to purchase this property at the time the EDC made the purchase, a consortium of five community colleges was in the process of applying for a $10 million grant, $8 million of which would be dedicated to staffing, equipping, and renovating a technical training center in Lawrence. While the grant did cover some renovations, those were limited to classroom and laboratory space only. So upon getting involved in the project, or when I was asked to kind of be that point person, point of contact between the consortium and the chamber and the EDC, city and county, getting to know the grant application and talking with the schools, I quickly identified that this grant, as great as that $8 million would be, it did not cover things like infrastructure development, parking lot improvements, exterior building improvements, didn't cover reception areas, office spaces, additional public restrooms. It was for classroom and laboratory space only. So quickly tried to develop a budget of what those costs would be, even if we were to receive this grant, and so... That budget came to approximately $1.2 million. In the 2015 budget process, roughly July, August of 2014, I submitted this request, and that was asking the city and the county to each contribute $500,000 to the renovation of the Peasley Center and the Economic Development Corporation to contribute another $200,000. That would bring us to the $1.2 million needed to finish out those kind of public spaces and infrastructure, should we land that grant. As part of that same budget request, we also asked for $100,000 from the city and the county each in annual support for operations to ensure that the Peasley Center would be on solid footing. Both the city and county did act on the operational funding request and had begun quarterly disbursements earlier this year. The county budgeted $500,000 in its capital budget, and the city determined that those funds would likely come from the general fund. However, both bodies asked for more detail at that time before taking any kind of formal action on these expenditures. Those details included exactly what those funds would be used for, in other words, the scope of work, some architectural drawings, and a good estimate of costs, a construction budget, to ensure that the funding was adequate to open the facility and that you wouldn't grant those funds and have us back here in the middle of construction asking for more money. So with that direction, we went back to work with the consortium to start working up the curriculum, and that would lead to then the design elements and ultimately a budget and that sort of thing. But in September, the consortium learned that their grant application was not in fact selected for funding. So while this was disappointing, I immediately conversed with David Corless and Craig Winog to ask if they felt like there would still be a interest in committing those renovation funds previously asked for, if we could in fact open the building in August and begin training with that limited budget. While neither of them could speak for their governing bodies, both expressed that the technical training was, remained a top priority of both the city and county commissions. And I have to just briefly thank David Corless. Both he and Craig Winog, I can say this project could have died, and I wouldn't be here on a hundred different occasions if not for the can-do attitude and the will to keep moving this thing forward. It's been a phenomenal effort behind the scenes, and it's been great to see both the city and county working so closely together to remove barriers here. So anyway, the... With that commitment from Dave and Craig that they felt the city and county would be interested if in fact we could come back with a realistic plan to open this with that $1.2 million, then approached the Board of the EDC, and they confirmed that they too would remain committed to their $200,000 contribution to renovations. So this brought us to that new total budget for classrooms, lab spaces, as well as infrastructure development, public spaces, exterior improvements. Total budget of $1.2 million. I'll go back to the current request just for a little more information. This brings us to an updated request, and there's, in here is some history that I'm actually covering here verbally, but... This all happened on the first day, by the way. We received this notification regarding the Department of Labor's grant not being funded, that this was on the first day of our new Executive Director of the Peasley Center, Marvin Hunt, starting work. So Marvin came in with a charge to revisit industry partners and determine what the most pressing needs were in the, among our employers, so that we could begin to design space and deliver a curriculum based on this new budget that we had. And with that now, I think I'll turn it over to Marvin for a few minutes to talk about what this is really all about, which is curriculum. And while you do that, Marvin, let me pull up the actual curriculum. All right, Mayor Amics and Commissioners, it's my privilege to be here tonight to talk a little bit about the curriculum. I think this is the exciting aspect of this. This is what it's really all about when it comes down to what we're trying to accomplish in our community. Hugh's done a fantastic job, and all of you, to support the development of this on an infrastructure basis. It will lead to curriculum that in your packet, there's letters from manufacturing, construction, car dealers, plumbers and pipe fitters, Home Builders Association, just all sorts of different groups saying that we need training in our community. In the curriculum, you'll notice that there's emphasized areas like courses offered by the Technical Training Center. Are the, those different groups that we went to said, you know what we really need is short-term training, that we'll get people competencies so they can go get employed. And then if they want to continue to get further credentials and further training, that's a good option too. But we really need that competency base built up quickly. And so in doing that, we developed four courses that the Peasley Center will offer. I'm scrolling past those now. We've offered, we will be offering in conjunction with three other community colleges like Flint Hills Tech, things like industrial electricity and industrial wiring, so people can assess quickly what are problems when a conveyor system goes down in a factory, get that thing up and running quickly. Neosho County Community College will do some welding training at Free State High School, and this is the partnership between the school district and between the Peasley too, in that adults will be able to take some of the programs into schools. The school students will be able to come into the Peasley and take courses. So it's a cooperative effort that's pretty widespread in our community. Neosho County will be offering a lot of the craft skills and carpentry. And finally, Johnson County will be offering computer literacy, basic computer literacy, and technical mathematics and other courses. So there's a pretty good span. We're offering, I think, nineteen courses in the fall. The Peas is doing four of these, Flint Hills Tech is doing two, Neosho County is doing eight, and Johnson County Community College would offer four of these courses. In terms of certificates, and I hope this is this... Yeah. Nope, that's not it. Hugh, I don't know, can you help me get back, do you know where the rest? Okay. All righty. The other document you may have seen in your packet is of certificates, and a lot of people want to know what type of credentials will people be able to get to prove their, you know, portable-type credentials. And of those, we would have twelve certificate potentials to start, and this is a building process. It's going to take several years to build it to the highest, more higher level of potential, but you could detain four credentials in one semester. If you stay in for two semesters, there's five additional, and if you stayed in as many as four, there's three others. And those are credentials in nationally portable credentials in areas like welding, construction, through nationally recognized curriculum, and manufacturing in other areas. So that's a quick overview of the curriculum. I don't know if you have any questions right at this time, or if you want to go back to your discussion, Hugh. Carry on, you ask questions when you're done. With that, actually, we'd be ready to move into Item Six A, which is to get into the actual action items and requests. So it's up to you if you did want to pause for any questions now, or you want me to move right into.
Okay, anybody got any questions to this point?
No.
Okay. Go into the requests.
Okay. The first item here is a request of a refund of 2014 property taxes, except for the space that was leased to Hyper. And I'm going to go back here and show you, show you something, the construction drawings. Just lost the, just lost the internet.
There you go.
Try again. Construction drawings. Okay. Approximately 20% of the space at the Peasley Center has been leased, and I'm pointing up here in the top left, that's the northwest corner, there's Hyper Technology. It's a small manufacturer of high-end racing wheels, and they have offices in this corner, and then in the south southeast corner, they have some manufacturing space. So they occupy approximately 20% of the facility. The training spaces that are currently proposed, you would come in the north end of the building here, and we've got office space to your left, that's Marvin Hunt's office. To the right would be a reception area. Right next to that would be a guest office, which, right out of the gate, Johnson County is housing someone thirty hours a week for counseling and other support services. They will work with students taking courses from any of the colleges or the Peasley Center, and other community colleges will do the same, so we're going to have a lot of demand for that office. The green spot here is a break area, an open sort of break area with vending, et cetera. Just on past it is the computer assessment lab. That can also be used as a classroom. These two are classrooms. And on down the hall, you've got the advanced manufacturing lab and construction technology labs. Those are what would be built out in what we'd call Phase One. We do have already drawn in detail, although not on here, but this area up here in the northeast corner, it would be slated as an automotive lab. And next to the manufacturing is a future full HVAC lab. It still allows us some unallocated space throughout the building. And then in addition to Hyper Technology going forward, one very exciting development is that the Lawrence Workforce Center that's now on Iowa Street, we responded to a request for proposals. They were looking for new space. They're a perfect fit for us as they administer the Workforce Investment Act funds for the federal government, and they basically provide support for people to be trained or retrained to either land employment or better their employment. And so what better place to be than right in the middle of our technical training facility? It also is definitely a shot in the arm as far as revenue for the Peasley Center goes. So going forward, that leased space is taxable, the Hyper space is taxable, they're both leased. We will be in the process of condo-ing the building so that we won't have to come back for these sort of requests for property tax refunds, because the the areas that are dedicated to education and charitable causes will in fact be tax exempt, or at least that's our expectation. So back to the request here. The request again is for 2014, the 80% of the building that was not leased to Hyper, it was dedicated again and purchased for charitable and educational purposes, that those property taxes be refunded so that they can be put back to good use. I've also attached a spreadsheet just showing the breakout of the city, county, and school district taxes. It's not, not displaying properly, but you can go on down and see this line here is the city's portion.
We're low.
Lowest of the three entities between city, county, and school, for sure. And I don't know if you want to take action at this time, or you want me to move on through the items first and then take them there?
Hugh, why don't you go ahead and
Keep moving?
Go through the entire request.
You bet. Next item is Six B, and that is the request with the additional background information that I believe I provided virtually all of it verbally. But again, at this time, we're respectfully requesting consideration from both the city and county, but tonight the city, for funds to support the development of infrastructure and renovations to the Peasley Center in the amount of $500,000. This is a one-time grant request. In addition to the the construction drawings that we had been asked to provide, we also have provided a something about that section on the... We've also provided a construction budget here that outlines the expenses, and we've got much more detail to that budget as well. But just wanted to show that in fact we are working within the $1.2 million budget. If we do spend some contingency funds, we actually have between an account at Douglas County Community Foundation, we've got $25,000 that was donated privately by citizens that could go towards supporting construction efforts, as well as funding that's in the Dwayne Peasley Technical Training Account, part of that of which is operational funds that have already been distributed, so we could contribute up to $125,000 and still keep the budget on track. So we feel like we've got the cushion here on the construction budget to make this happen. The next item requested tonight is to consider a loan of up to $150,000 for renovations to the Lawrence Workforce Center. I showed you briefly where the Lawrence Workforce Center would be located. That opportunity came along shortly after we had received news we weren't being selected for funding of the TACT grants, and that was very good timing for us. However, in order to capture that tenant and that service and that revenue that they would bring, we're looking at renovations somewhere in the neighborhood of $275,000. So pulling that from our $1.2 million budget, we just didn't feel like realistically we could deliver curriculum come August. So city, with discussions with Dave and Craig, we came up with a proposal that the city and county share in providing a loan for those, that renovation that's tied, and the loan be tied to the lease, and that the rate of the loan is, so it'd be a ten-year loan that is at a rate that is the average of the current investments of idled funds for the city and county, which based on your investment restrictions is about a half a percent, plus one percent. So roughly a one and a half percent loan is what's being proposed, ten-year loan. Feel free to make that interest-free if you like, but that is the proposed amount, and and again, it's not a definite, it's up to $150,000 each, so we hope to keep those costs to where you need to, we need less than that. The next item is to consider waiving or reimbursing building permit fees. There's two different fees, one because the Workforce Center work has had to go going right away, as our tenant to the Lawrence Workforce Center plans to move in in mid-April and begin operations May first. The Peasley Center, we hope to go out for bid next week and be applying for building permits the first week of April, probably at the latest. So those two are two different building permit fees that we'd ask to be, consideration that those be waived. And thirdly, then there's an application fee for industrial revenue bonds of $1,000 that we asked the commission also consider waiving. So those three are one action item. And then the last was just, we will be receiving a request for IRB financing for the project, and I understand that's going to PERC this Thursday, and then potentially on your agenda consent or otherwise next Tuesday. So stand for any questions.
Questions are Hugh. Dave, probably more of a question of you on the loan amount for the build out of the Lawrence Workforce Center. Are we happy with that payback arrangement? Are we happy with that payback arrangement?
I think so. I'm saying that. We think that'll work. I mean, it'll... From an accounting standpoint, it'll be a credit. But I mean, we've done that... We did that last year for the community shelter. We did that with some different funds. And we'll just probably just do this out of the general fund. It's not that... It's not as much money. Hugh was very complimentary, me and Craig, that I think we point to our governing bodies because you all directed us that this was a very high priority for the community. And we've known that, and we've worked really hard to keep it moving. There's one major misstatement that Hugh said. He said he was sort of the point person. He was the point person. He's the reason why we're here this evening.
Yeah, we do need to mention the hours. I know that Hugh has put in on this. And I do want to say Shirley Martin Smith did send me an email that she had a family member who became ill. And so she's unable to be here tonight. She's done tremendous job with the board and making sure that we stay course, you know, on course along with direction from you and Marvin and others that have stood up and decided to serve. This is a tremendous project and one that, as we go on community visits to our large employers and even our small employers, realizing that, you know, this technical training is a must. I mean, it is a must. And it's one thing that we can provide for our citizens, you know, that opportunity to become trained and being able to, you know, find employment and things that employers are asking for. And I think that that gives everybody a leg up in being able to find a job. I mean, that is important to so many people.
You bet.
And something I feel quite proud of.
And I feel bad if I could just... I wish I had time, but I know we're short on time. The list of people to thank in addition to this is virtually endless. But maybe that's something to save for the groundbreaking. So the ribbon cutting.
There you go. Okay. Hugh, thank you again. Public comment. Any public comment on this item? I think that speaks volumes for the amount of work that's been done and the great number of folks that have been talked to and people that have brought their comments forward on this item. This is truly, you know, a big-time deal. I do want to say one thing. Dwayne Peaslee. There is a guy that was truly, you know, about making sure that people were able to land that job. And that was the goal, is to make sure that, you know... My kid or the guy that lives next door to me was able to find that job. This guy did it. And he was the guy that stepped up and constantly worked on... It didn't matter if it was local issues that came before us, items that went before the state. I mean, what a great person. And to be able to go out and visit with him, you know, during his last days and realize that when we were asking him about, you know, having his name on this, this was a big deal. This was a big deal because Dwayne was the kind of person that, you know, he just didn't want all that, you know, kind of... I don't know, name on the front page, you know, and that kind of stuff. So this was something that was really big. And, you know, here was a guy that meant so much to all of us that are here that have had the opportunity to serve. I mean, I feel fortunate to be able to say that I've been able to serve my community and my county for the years that I've been here. But when I get to realize that I've had the opportunity to meet people like Dwayne Peaslee, that's a big deal. That makes it all worth it. So anyway. I guess I'd be in support of this project. Any other questions or comments? Well, I think we've got a great opportunity. So there are no other comments. The items that are before us tonight, I'll kind of lump them pretty much all together. I entertain a motion to approve the request for reimbursement of a portion of the 2014 property taxes as outlined in the report. I would entertain a motion to approve the request for the $500,000 for the support of the Peaslee Center renovations as again outlined in the report and the funds that will come from our reserve funds, Dave. Is that correct?
It's coming from the general fund, the fund balance.
And that approve the request for the loan up to $150,000 for the Lawrence Workforce Center renovations with the payback as outlined in the report. I would entertain a motion to approve the request for the building permit and industrial revenue bond application fee waivers. And also to receive the request on the IRB financing for the purpose of assessing sales tax exemption certificate for the renovation and to refer this item to the Public and Senate Review Committee.
Moved.
Second. I have a motion made in second for approval. It was made by Commissioner Dever and seconded by Vice Mayor Farmer. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the pass is five zero. Thank you all very much. David, thank you again for all your work and Craig and, you know, everybody that was involved.
Scott has been involved in a lot of work in regards to the land use and building permit. A lot of good work from C staff.
Okay, at this point, we're going to take about a five-minute break. And I promise we'll be right back.
Not yet. What's with all the blue?
Okay, next item on the agenda is to receive the report from McDonald and Associates regarding the Rockchuck Park audit and consider approving payment and claim of $1,092,977 to Rockchuck Park LLC for infrastructure at Rockchuck Park. Michael?
Good evening, I'm Mike Glinsky, I'm the city auditor and I'll introduce this item tonight. The report you're receiving is a revised audit report from McDonald and Associates on the infrastructure at Rockchuck Park. They revised the report based on additional information the city provided, which included additional information on expenditures related to the recreation center and the infrastructure, as well as concrete batch tickets. So just as a, I'm not going to go over the report, but a reminder that the city engaged McDonald and Associates to conduct an audit with two objectives. Those objectives were to determine whether the infrastructure construction work was delivered in accordance with the development agreement, and whether the city's expenditures for infrastructure were in compliance with the development agreement. I'll make two quick observations about the revised report. And one is that one revision was to adjust the amount of the final payment. The new amount is $1,092,900, and I think it's $70.77. My other observation is that the revised report didn't change any of the recommendations that were made back in February 26th, and there were seven, and they remain in place. So I'd be happy to either answer any questions, or Warren Hudson, the staff from McDonald and Associates is here, and he can address any questions and provide additional information.
Questions of Michael right now.
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Warren, come on up. Warren, comments on the additional work that was done?
Michael stated it pretty clearly. I mean, our recommendations essentially remained the same. We revised the amount owed by the city based on some clarifications and additional information provided by city personnel, and we made some minor clarifications on the delivery of infrastructure section, which is in Exhibit B on Items 2 and 4. But other than that, it's essentially the same report.
Questions of Warren. Warren got a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, and something that I asked you the first day that I met you, and had to do with those batch tickets, and, tell me again if I understood this right. Bliss signed for the, for the batch tickets as the concrete came on site, is that correct?
The batch tickets were made out to Bliss Sports.
Okay.
Some of the batch tickets were not signed by anyone, but they were addressed to Bliss Sports, too.
And you had told me that under, under the agreement, that you thought that it was...
The information...
The concrete supplier felt comfortable with Bliss Sports versus King Construction, is that right?
That was the explanation given to me, and I had no reason to doubt it.
Okay. In all the, all the looking that you did at all the contracts, was there a contract between Bliss Sports and King Construction? And just to be honest, we paid King, or King was paid $9.1 million or something like that for, for the concrete. I guess I don't understand the relationship between Bliss and King, because we got, you know, these lien releases from, from King, but did Bliss pay for the concrete to what, what you saw?
Based on the attestation that King signed, whether, as far as the vendor's concerned, they attested to the fact that they were paid $9.1 million, and that's all I can validate.
So what is your question?
Well, my question is, I was always under the impression that, you know, that the, the folks that, their name was on those batch tickets was the responsible party for the payment of that, of that concrete. So, and it's, Warren and I talked, and everybody's seen, Bliss Sports' name is, you know, on all those batch tickets. So I assume that they would be the responsible party, and the thing that I, you know, if, if Bliss paid, then what is the relationship between them and King? Because King was paid also, so I just want to make sure. Was there a contract between those two?
There was a contract between Bliss Sports and King Construction Company. It was a lump sum contract for a scope of services which included the concrete work.
Okay. Because King was, King was bonded to be able to do this, I couldn't understand why that there was any question about whether or not they could do it.
The material purchased by King or Bliss Sports, at the end of the day, the way I looked at it from an audit perspective was that whoever guaranteed the actual material, it was sort of irrelevant. You think that you didn't get something that was in the site plan? As long as you feel like you've got what was in the site plan, then the materials provided to accomplish that task are, I'm not going to say irrelevant, but I'm going to say that it doesn't really matter whose name is on the invoice, as long as you think you've got the concrete that was supposed to be out there.
And only paid once for it.
Yeah, the... Correct.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Other questions?
Okay.
Well, I've got a question.
Okay.
With regards to the sample audit on the concrete, and which you had, which a number of the tickets, excuse me, which a number of the tickets ended up being for other uses, like the tilt-up and part of the stadium, I believe, how is it that you came so close to what you thought was just an absolutely perfect outcome, when indeed it wasn't? And you, then you, and then the other question, the other part of that question is, I'll let you respond to everything, is why did you assume that the concrete was four inches thick throughout the whole entire project? So with that assumption, with the four-inch-thick assumption, and with the batch tickets in hand, mathematically, everything worked out just fine, until you take out a bunch of the batch tickets that don't belong there, and then we look at the fact that the concrete was a different thickness than four. That's, that's the issue I need to have explained to me, how that, how you ended up in an audit situation with the finding you came up with, when it looks to me like you used two different, irrelevant, well, one was an erroneous thickness, and the other one was a lack of the proper sample size of tickets.
Right, which either one of them would have negated the quantitative analysis performed in that audit. That was part of a three-to-four-step test that we performed on the concrete. It was by no means meant to be a standalone review to ensure that you got what you paid for. So what we did is we went back and looked at the timing of the review of city personnel measurements that were conducted by city personnel, testing reports by city personnel, and testing done by outside firms, looking at the, the quality and the specifications of the concrete. We used the quantitative test as sort of a last-ditch review to make sure that we agreed with the findings of the city auditor, who went through and looked at the processes initially related to the oversight by city personnel on this project. And to specifically answer your question about how did we get so close, I can tell you it was dumb luck.
Yes, all bad numbers are right, Ted.
When we went through and looked at the batch tickets that were delivered, my understanding was that the, the section of the batch ticket that said "area," which I believe there were only three, three different versions, which was surface, water, and sewer. My assumption was that if it said "surface," it was related to the surface project, the infrastructure. Whether or not it said footings or what have you, that was a note that the driver might have had in order to know where to deliver the concrete, not necessarily what the concrete was used for. Like I said, I looked at surface, water, sewer. When I came up, tabulated those tickets, looked at what I thought were related directly to those tickets, it just so happens that we were within 2% of the quantity. And at that point in time, after the other observations, looking at, you know, the city personnel's review of, of the construction, the measurements, and the fact that you've got testing firms out here looking at the specification, we had no reason to search further. Now, if there had been a massive variance, I might have asked, why is there such a big swing between quantities? But because it came out so close, it's just, it's a fluke, really, but it came out and I didn't have a reason to continue testing at that point. The 4%, or the four-inch thickness was the result of an October 17th, 2012 memo by the city that stated that the thickness for parking lots would be five inches on the site. Now, what I did is I took into account displacement of dowels, or any rebar, or any other thing that's in the concrete, and said that that would be an inch of displacement. So you would have four inches of concrete and an inch of something else in that concrete structure. And I was trying to get a high, kind of a high-level view or estimate of the total amount of concrete used on the project, so I thought that at the time, four inches was my best estimate.
Was, was that spec not available to you in terms of what the thickness was of the street, of the parking lot, of the sidewalk, and on the curb?
I'm glad you asked that. The specifications for the street were available, and that's something that we found in our second round of audit testing. However, those specifications were not directly referenced in the development agreement. So they were utilized, from my understanding, but they were not incorporated contractually as part of the development agreement. The second part is, is that there were no specifications done for the parking. My understanding is, is that the parking was done to city specifications or city direction. There were just no written drawings related to that. So I had no basis to look at quantities.
So you only looked at the development agreement and what was in that development agreement?
That was the scope of the review, was to look at the compliance with the development And the development agreement had Exhibit I, which had a good-faith estimate of quantities necessary to accomplish a certain structure. You had a site plan that you were trying to accomplish in a good-faith estimate of what people thought it would take in order to accomplish that site plan. That's not an assured quantity that is necessary, that's a, it's an estimate. So I didn't have anything specifically to go back and look at quantities installed, because there were no as-builts. There were no specifications done related to the parking, and Exhibit I is an estimate. So we have to go away from more of the quantitative to the qualitative review of the, of the project.
Okay, so would you characterize the fact that you came out so close by using, other than the correct inputs, as just a mere coincidence?
Mere coincidence.
In fact, when you put all those tickets together, take out the tickets that go to the tilt-up, and take out the tickets that go to the stadium and everything else, it comes out, I believe, within 10%. Is that not correct? Was, I was looking for my paper here, which is a very reasonable amount, and it shows that we, more concrete was delivered than we used, and that we would build correctly based on the concrete amount that was charged.
Correct. Which is what you would expect.
Yep, yeah. Well, I guess the point that kind of irritates me is that the answer would have been correct if we would have had the right inputs, because on, on the whole program, after it was all said and done, we lined up all Chuck 1100 tickets, or 700 tickets, what was there?
That we had 1700.
1700. When you add them all up, it comes out just right. So the outcome of the staff's audit shows that we got everything we paid for, and actually more, there was more concrete that was delivered than we used, and everything was fine. But then, the analysis you performed showed the same outcome, but it was errant.
Correct. But the fact is, it was one test of many. We conducted several other tests related to the oversight of the construction of the infrastructure project. So quantity was not necessarily the only decisive factor that we used to say that you got what you paid for.
All right. So, in light of what you just said, I just would like clarification from you on the value of doing a volumetric-to-aerial analysis extent on the concrete as it's delivered in a fluid state, and then it's poured and placed and measured in an aerial extent in different dimensions. You were converting, using what I would call estimates to begin with.
Correct.
And I, I guess, you know, for me, I never quite understood why we were doing this analysis based on a, what I would say, a, in a statistically inaccurate way of determining quantities, because every time you, every time you make an assumption, it's based on faulty data, and that you don't have a complete thickness of this aerial extent of concrete, you're just assuming, you're making assumptions. And if you make assumptions, then you really can't come up with a number that's the same every time, unless you just use random numbers that you create based on specifications. And I'm just, I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, in my world, I feel like I want to be able to repeat the same number every time. If I'm going to audit and check something, and I check my numbers on, say, I'm trying to convert data from, you know, milliliters to some other unit of measure, you know, you want to make sure there's a direct correlation. But, but in this instance, where basically, you can, you can do this conversion, but it's not recommended to do, number one, unless you have scientific and accurate measurements of the thickness of those areas, and can, can guarantee those measurements across the board. So, I mean, I, I thought it was odd that you were doing this to begin with, only because I'm, you know, I, I'd like to be able to repeat the analysis that I do every time I do it, if, if, if possible, and, and hopefully the results are accurate, and, and to its true definition. So whether it's right or wrong, it's the same number every time, I guess that's what I'm trying to say. And, you know, I have a hard time understanding the value of that exercise, and, you know, no disrespect intended, but I, I, I feel like the actual physical measurements of the concrete that's out there, done by the staff, would be the best attestation of the quantities that are out there, and that your spot-checking those numbers, or spot-checking that field data, would probably be the most repeatable way of, of, of coming up with the same number, as opposed to trying to convert these different units of measure in a, in a very inaccurate way. So I know, I know staff went through and tried to come up with a formula for conversion, and I think it's probably reasonable, but even those numbers are, are not real, because we didn't uniformly measure thicknesses in every location, and we can't. We wouldn't want to be drilling holes in our brand-new concrete, so it's silly. And I guess what I'm trying to get at is, there's a lot of talk, and a lot of speculation, and a lot of, you know, hand-wringing over this, this batch-ticket thing, and, and, you know, I respect that you came here, and I respect that you following up on your work, but, you know, can, can you tell me, you know, whether or not the value of this, what, what the value was in, in purpose of evaluating these batch tickets, and trying to correlate a, an aerial measurement of the materials that were applied?
We went down this road before we realized that we didn't have as-built drawings representing basically what was finally put into the, the final product.
Right.
And honestly, without as-builts, it's, you're right. It's kind of a pointless test.
Yes.
Plus, you're also right, there are a lot of eaches and, and, well, linear measurements, there are a lot of surface measurements that are not volume measurements that you have to convert.
Unit measures, yeah, yeah.
Right. So you have to make a, a great deal of assumptions in order to convert that. Now, in retrospect, should I have done that test? Probably not. Did it really accomplish anything? I, I can tell you that based on the follow-up work, we can't really place any reliance on the batch tickets, but honestly, I don't think it really matters. The batch tickets were not how you paid for the project.
Right, that, and that was, that was not our, we did not walk to the register with the batch ticket and pay based on those.
Correct. And it wasn't a unit-priced contract. You paid $9.1 million for...
Right.
Parking lots and roads.
Right. So I guess I wanted you to say that, because I got to extent, I was very frustrated, because, you know, I like to be precise and accurate, and, you know, in, in this instance, I couldn't be, be either, because I really wasn't, I wasn't sure what we were trying to achieve, and, and, and if somebody else came along and tried to repeat the same exercise, you know, and they used, tried to use the same numbers, it's almost impossible, because the as-builts don't exist, and we don't really know what the thicknesses are. We know minimal thicknesses, but we don't know actual thicknesses in many cases.
Right. And you might be able to get it in the ballpark, you might not.
Which is why I think the, I think I understand why you used a unit, four inches, but, you know, Vice Mayor Farmer created a spreadsheet to try to do these same calculations, and, you know, I think they all came to the same conclusion, that we, there's more concrete out there than we paid for. But I guess really what I wanted to know, and what the public to know, is, in your estimation, whether or not the, the, that exercise, from an auditing and, let's call it statistical standpoint, is it, was it of much value to the overall product that you provided?
No, I mean, at the end of the day, once we were able to go back and look at it, and all the facts came in at the end of the audit, obviously, it would be helpful if you could go to the end, see what was available, and then go back and do the test, but we were trying to do the test in the most expeditious way we possibly could, which means we're dealing with the information we have at any given point in time. When the city provided delivery tickets, my understanding was, is that they were not all the delivery tickets, but I tried my best to match it up to the individual line items I thought it related to.
Got it.
That was another assumption that I made.
Got it. Okay.
So you, you have a lot of assumptions that are rolled out there, and basically, my objective was to validate what had already been tested by the city auditor, and what I'd already observed through looking at physical reports and logs from the Public Works Department.
Thank you.
So, not being an engineer...
No, you're just a doctor.
What I understand is that you did multiple tests, this was one of the tests, and even though this particular test that we talked about with the batch tickets was an error, it didn't change your conclusions about the two questions that were asked. You still had the same opinion, based on the fact that you had other information that helped you to arrive to that conclusion.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I have a question for Michael Glinsky.
Thanks, Warren.
I'd asked you this yesterday, and if you were doing this audit, would you have looked at the batch tickets at all? Would that have been one of your tests, or would you have relied on other mechanisms to show that there was more concrete delivered out there and measured out there than, than what we paid for?
So it's, you're putting me on the spot a little bit here, because I haven't done the planning work that I would have to do, but given my, what I remember of the development agreement, I, I don't think I would test the concrete tickets, because that's not a pay item. Again, I haven't looked at the development agreement, though, since probably, you know, a year ago now, so. And I don't think it's necessary to reach a conclusion about compliance with the development agreement.
Okay.
So I see Commissioner Dever laughing at my hedging, but you count on that, I think, right?
Okay. Any other questions?
One more for Warren.
Okay.
I wanted to ask him that, because he, he had mentioned that to me yesterday, and I feel like that's an appropriate point, that there were other tests that were done...
Yes.
And you were just trying to, you were making assumptions, but in a sense, trying to be thorough, to test every possible avenue in which somebody could come back and say, "One, two, and three tested out, four didn't check out, so you've got to do more testing." My question to you is, there have been some who have articulated to, to us that the veracity of the audit is called into question because of this error in calculations. Can you, first of all, address that? Secondly, speak to how common something like this has been in previous experiences that you've had in your 25 years of experience? And third, just speaking specifically to the project in general, I'll ask you the same question that I asked the last time that you were here, and that is, what assurances can you, having seen the entirety of the information... can you, having seen the entirety of the information that has been made available to you with cooperation from Bliss Sports, KU Endowment, city staff, et cetera, what assurances can you give to the public that while the process by which we arrived at this conclusion may not have been ideal, but there is more out there than, not as far as the entirety of the infrastructure, there's more out there than what we paid for? And how certain are you that that is in fact the case?
Now, your first question was about the veracity of the audit.
Correct.
The initial objective of the audit, or the first audit, was to basically provide a risk assessment or an overview of the project and determine whether or not there was a need for additional testing and whether there were significant risks that existed that might need some, a more granular level of review. When I came out here, I tried to provide probably a little bit more than I should have in that area because I did not need to do the quantity review in order to perform that particular objective. I performed the quantity review because, A, the batch tickets were available and they were presented to me by city personnel as complete for at least certain projects. And I thought it was worth the time to do an analysis of those items and determine whether or not we had significant evidence that quantities that were outlined in exhibit I were delivered. Now, that also included me walking the project site, counting various items, including tennis courts, lights, landscaping, and getting a sense of the overall magnitude of the footprint of the project and how much concrete was necessary in order to achieve that footprint. Once again, the quantity review was just a, an additional step to say, okay, all the observations I've made from city personnel logs, the measurements made by city personnel, and the testing reports that were provided by, I believe, Alpha Geotech were sufficient in order to ensure that what the city expected was designed and built out there. It was a nice to have, it wasn't a have to have.
So on that, before, sorry, on that, before you move to the next question, if you would have not arrived at the 1.4% conclusion that you did, and let's say there would have been a discrepancy of, let's just say, 12%, just pulling a number out, greater than three, greater than six, you know, something that would have caused you to see a red flag and say, huh, something's not right here, not arrive to the, the numbers by virtue of coincidence that you did, the coincidental numbers. And you would have, what other testing mechanisms would you have done or could you have done? Or would that have been inconclusive just on the basis of the fact that you didn't have all the batch tickets?
If the city personnel would have known that all the batch tickets were not available at that point in time or were not found yet, then yes, that test is useless. Whether or not my assumptions were correct or not, without the batch tickets being accurate, you have two sides of the equation that are incorrect, so either one of them would nullify the test. If we would have gone in and tested this and found out that there was a tremendous amount that appeared to be specified over what was delivered, I, it would have raised questions and I would have continued to ask of city personnel and anybody else I could, what is the reason for that or what mistakes am I making in my calculation? Because it came out so close, I didn't have any reason to ask the question. And once again, it was a, it was an additional level of comfort that the previous observations were in fact representative of you had gotten what you paid for.
Okay, so the two remaining questions, one being, have there been similar processes followed in previous audits that you've done where, where you've, you've done your audit and provided your recommendations and gone back and, you know, maybe seen an error in calculations or an assumption that was used that was wrong? Can you speak to that? And then secondly, the, what would you say as our hired auditor to the taxpayers of Lawrence and Douglas County who are footing the bill in totality of $22.5 million, did we get a good deal for what we paid for?
As far as whether or not this happens on any audit, it happens occasionally. The audit is only as good as the information provided and as good as the assumptions that I make. In this case, both were followed. So the way the standard reads, for those of us in Michael's and my profession, is that if we notice something material that affects the finding, that affects the conclusion of the audit, we will reissue that report with the revisions of that finding. In this case, even though the calculation was incorrect, it still did not affect the final conclusion of the audit. Once again, that was one of several tests performed on infrastructure and whether or not you guys got what you paid for.
Okay.
As far as assurances related to the audit, I'll go back to what I said initially in one of the previous council meetings, that this had a level of oversight for a project of this size that frankly I have not seen. It was a very dramatic, almost an excessive amount of oversight for a project of this And you had city personnel performing measurements, you had city personnel reviewing concrete pores, you had testing firms providing data to Public Works outlining thicknesses of concrete. At any point in time, Public Works had enough data to be able to determine whether or not they were not getting what they paid for. And in fact, there were some minor adjustments made on some of the individual quantities related to items where Public Works determined that things had not been built to what the city desired, such as fire burn without the durable aggregate. So there was plenty of evidence there that said that not only was Public Works reviewing the project, Public Works had made strides and steps in order to correct anything they felt was deficient. So from an audit perspective, still, I have no doubt that you guys got what you paid for. And it was in compliance with the development agreement.
Thanks.
Warren, last question before we go to public comment. You know, there's disagreement, obviously, on whether or not it was a lump sum contract or whether it was a cost plus. And I still read part of it as saying it's cost plus two and a half percent with a maximum out of pocket at, the maximum cap at $22.5 million. Were you able to establish what the actual cost of all those improvements were or are those figures readily available?
Yes.
Do you have that exact figure?
If we do not include the construction management fee, which really we shouldn't because Bliss Sports exceeded costs by such an amount that there's no way he earned his The total cost on this project was $13,211,798.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Warren?
So you won't pay in cost plus?
No.
Okay.
Got a cap. But thanks for asking.
I was just.
Okay, thanks. Public comment? Any public comment? Please.
Warren, I'd just like some clarification on one thing that you brought out the last time. When you were asked that how much would it have cost if it would have gone to a bid process versus a no bid process, I believe you said about $1.8 million. Is that correct?
Hey, Jim. Come this way, we'll get the answer for you in just a second.
Talking to my phone.
Yeah, talking to the mic because people want to hear you.
You want to repeat it?
Yes.
Please. And we could have your name also.
Okay, Jim, buddy, Lawrence. At the last audit presentation, I think you were asked how much would it have cost if it would have been a bid process versus a non-bid process? You said it would be about an additional $1.8 million. Is that correct?
Anything else? Any other comments?
Okay, well, if that was the case, then it was cheaper to have a no bid than it would be to have a bid process. And the no bid is a thing that's, that's getting all the heat, but it was cheaper and evidently it was effective.
Good. Warren? Would you like to answer that, please?
Every project is a little bit different. There are a lot of moving parts involved in a, in a construction project because it's not just a simple thing about hiring one person to go out and do one simple project. We had a rec center, we had infrastructure, and there was also a portion that was Kansas Athletics that was involved in this as well. The ability to coordinate all the construction activities may have resulted in some economies of scale. So you might have saved some money by having basically one contractor out there or one developer handling many aspects of this project, mainly because they didn't have to achieve some sort of learning curve in order to determine where they were when they stepped on the project they already knew. All of the planning, all the timing was controlled by one entity. And in some cases, that is very beneficial. Now, as far as the analysis where we came out at $1.8 million, that was not necessarily saying if it hadn't been bid, or that it had, if it had been bid, you would have paid $1.8 million more. That was saying that from 2010 forward, based on project data accumulated by the city of Lawrence for similar projects or for similar aspects of the project related to infrastructure like curb work, streets, parking lots, what have you, that based upon what had been bid in these prior projects, this would cost $1.8 million less than you had previously bid, or than previous bids on other similar projects. Now, the assumption is, is that that was, that was something that would occur each and every time when you were to bid this project out. Now, this project happened at a specific point in time with a specific set of circumstances and an economic environment that was conducive to what was paid during this specific point in time. So I can't say that if you had not bid it, it wouldn't have been cheaper, more expensive. Who knows? The fact was you had $22.5 million in cap on this development agreement and the developer for the infrastructure side of this project was completely at risk because had the rec center exceeded the $10.5 million, that was going to eat into the infrastructure budget up to zero. So if the rec center had come out to an extremely pricey entity, the developer was on the hook for providing the infrastructure for no money, essentially, if it came to that extreme. So could you have bid out the infrastructure? Yes, you probably could have, but at the end of the day, the developer was on the hook for the entire remaining amount and he had to provide the infrastructure no matter Whether or not it's fair, eh, I don't know. I mean, at the time, someone had to be looking at this as a good business decision and I think that it turned out to be a pretty good business decision for you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Monte Sokup, 4721 Broadway Drive. Mayor and Commissioners, RCP LLC is pleased that the McDonald Associates audit confirmed our position that the infrastructure improvements matter exceeded the specifications established in the development agreement and that the costs incurred by Bliss Two in constructing and developing the infrastructure improvements were compliant with the terms of the development agreement. I'd like to take this opportunity to make one point of clarification on the McDonald Associates report. In the paragraph that addresses the city recommended adjustments to the amount that should be considered for payment, the statement indicates that the work was not to specification, which essentially implies that something was specified that was not delivered. And in some cases, that was the case. However, in more than half of the costs identified for non-payment were for improvements that exceeded what was required by the contract documents and thus were deemed not per specification. We don't disagree that the city should not be obligated to pay for those. They were outside of what was required, so the city shouldn't have to pay for them. We do, however, wish to clarify for the record that both the city staff and the auditor confirmed that the city of Lawrence accepted improvements in excess of what was contract or required with a value of approximately $750,000. Thanks.
Other comment? Any other public comment? Back to the commission. The item that is before us tonight is to receive the report from McDonald Associates regarding the audit and also to consider approving both the payment and the claim in the amount of $1,92,970.77. I guess I would like to say that there's probably a lot more to say, but I think we've come to that point where it's decision time. And that's probably all I've got. I think there's been a lot of work done by a lot of people and that even though that I may have questions about whatever process was followed, I think the, the commission has made pretty strong statements about process in the future and how those things are going to happen, but we've got to deal with this one tonight and that's why it's on the agenda. So. Questions, comments, statements? If there's not, you know, I guess one last comment then. I do have to say one thing, even though I may question, you know, the process that we used, I will say one thing. On behalf of the folks that I serve with and to the staff that has worked on this project, we have a great number of people that is using, using a facility in Lawrence, Kansas. And, you know, it's going to be, I would imagine over time, one of those places that may be one of the, you know, the big places to come visit in our state and throughout, you know, this region. And I do believe over time, it's going to be something that we're truly all going to be proud of. And I appreciate all the work that everybody does and has done on the project. I want everybody to understand that my vote has nothing bad to say about, you know, the facilities that are there. I want everybody to understand that. It's purely processed, but I do want to say on behalf of, you know, two of my colleagues that I serve with, I think it's something that, it's a big time project. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the payment and claim of $1,92,970.77 that you, oh, okay, to Rock Chuck Park LLC for infrastructure at Rock Chuck Park.
Moved.
Second. Motion made in second for approval of that amount of money to Rock Chuck Park LLC for a payment and claim. It's made by Commissioner Shum and second by Commissioner Dever. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Passes four to one. Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is to consider adopting on second reading ordinance number 9086 establishing an INR neighborhood revitalization area at 705 Massachusetts Street and consider authorizing the city manager to execute a cooperative agreement between the city, county, and school district on the administration of the NRA. Consider authorizing the city manager to execute a performance agreement between the city and the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Excuse me, Mayor, before we get started, I'm going to withdraw from this item as I have done consistently thus far. I have done consistently thus far.
Sorry, I thought you were about to...
Who's the concerned nickel he's in?
That's right, yeah. To warm it up. Brett?
Good evening. Brett Kremkano, City Economic Development Coordinator. Before you consider the second reading of this request, I thought I'd just briefly recap all the actions that have taken place on the request since you first received it. You referred it to PERC, and they are Public Consensus Review Committee. On February 13th, 2015, they recommended on a four-to-one vote a 15-year, 95% NRA with conditions outlined by staff. It then went back to the city commissioners. You held a public hearing. And on February 17th, you voted three-to-one to authorize city participation in the NRA at the 15-year, 95% rebate level. The county then heard it on February 18th. They approved participation on a three-to-zero vote in a 15-year, 85% NRA program. They chose a little bit different rebate percentage because of their cost-benefit ratios that they were looking at. School board then considered it on March 9th. They unanimously approved on consent participation in the NRA at the same level as the city. Since it has went to these governing bodies, the staff, county, and applicant have reviewed the NRA plan, and we've made a few changes. We added language to clarify the definition increment. We added language to specify that the NRA applied only to the expansion portion of this project and not the existing hotel. So in the future, if those two parcels were ever combined, it would remain only on the expansion portion. And then we updated the NRA rebate schedule so that it reflected both the 95% for the city and the school district and the 85% for the county. Staff and applicant has also been involved in reviewing the performance agreement. Staff has come up with a version that accommodates the city commissioners having full authority regarding compliance. Applicant has come up with a version of theirs also with suggested language. And so there may be other staff or the applicant that want to speak to that. But that basically brings us to tonight with the reading, center reading consideration. At this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions or if you have questions of other staff or applicant?
Questions of Brett? Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Dave, the, I guess I do have one. The version of the performance agreement that gives us the total authority to decide whether or not a rebate continues to happen or can be pulled from the project? Is that correct? Based on factors?
Correct. We've provided a draft performance agreement, and the applicant has some suggested changes to it. I think one of the issues is if there is non-compliance with the law and the land use requirements for the property, will the city commission in its sole discretion be able to look at that issue and decide whether or not the rebate in whole or in part should continue? We've tried to draft the performance agreement, and I'll point to the section that's there. Looks like it's in section three. Right before number four. If the company, and that's the applicant, that's the property owner, fails to comply in whole or in part with the conditions of the plan, the plan sets out all the different things that are going to be built, the cooperative agreement that says who all the, with the different entities, or this agreement, the city may withhold all or a portion of any rebate until full compliance is achieved or may otherwise terminate the NRA in this agreement in the governing body's discretion. Staffs met with the applicant yesterday and again today. And this afternoon, Mr. Anderson provided a suggested language change, and he may be best to walk us through that language. I think he does point out that he believes that it is appropriate that the language provide a clear path for an opportunity for the applicant to cure with some level of notice. My stance was, is that that's what we historically do, and I didn't know that we needed to set that out, but I'm not going to. I think that there's probably some value in having that set out in the agreement. One of the issues that the applicant also has a concern about is whether non-compliance might be triggered by an action from a third party. The example is someone, a patron doing something illegal on the property, minor in possession, having an illegal substance. That's a violation of the law. It occurred on that property. So the issue would be, how does that impact the tax rebate? I think we have that situation occur, obviously, in any number of different establishments, whether they get any public consent or not. So the issue is, at what level does the commission want to be involved in that issue? We've talked about that in this room before. When we received this request, we specifically identified that as an issue as we were going to process that and recognize that it was, come back to you all as well. Obviously, those situations occur through, in most instances, through no fault of the owner or operator. It is possible that in some situation, you might have an owner or operator, I'm not talking about this one, perhaps a successor, that might operate it in a way where it might be a continuing public safety problem, and we might want to ask in this room, do we want to continue the property tax rebate? We haven't talked all that much about this issue. I want to give you all the maximum discretion to decide that. They point out that they're about ready to make a substantial financial investment in the community at this location. And the issue is, at what level can they have assurances that their financial performance is going to actually be successfully executed? So we're trying to work that out. I think the language that Mr. Anderson provided, and you see that kind of in the, what is that kind of, it's the pink highlight there, the Barbara Emerson applicant suggested changes. He's got also a cover letter there where the, if you go again then to the end of section three, it still has the same language that I already read to you earlier. If the company fails to comply in whole or in part with the conditions of the plan, the cooperative agreement or this agreement, the city may withhold all or a portion of any rebate until full compliance is achieved or may otherwise terminate the NRA in this agreement in the governing body's discretion. So for example, if there is a problem with the historic guideline compliance, there's going to be issues, obviously, with the certificate of occupancy or if it's after it's occupied, if there are changes, there might be issues under our land use code. This language would still then be able to provide you with the ability to talk about that issue in this room with the applicant and see whether or not that impacts the tax rebate in addition to impacting the occupancy. But if you look at there, under section three, Mr. Anderson has struck out alcoholic beverage in section C and then has the language in regards to D about the company. Again, that's the applicant. Best, shall implement best practices and use its best efforts to operate in substantial compliance with all applicable alcohol beverages laws. So it's going to be that substantial compliance as opposed to strict compliance standard. I think there is a difference. But I think that's in recognition that they have concerns about perhaps losing the tax rebate based on the actions of third parties. So that's what we're trying to narrow it down to really, that, I think. But my bias is to give you all that discretion. Their concern is not necessarily with this commission or any future commission. It's just with the certainty over a 15-year time period as to how they would be able to essentially bank the ability to know that they've got this rebate coming. And again, Mr. Anderson is more articulate to be able to describe it. I think that's the narrowed issue in regards to the two difference of agreements. I think that their suggestion about the cure period is acceptable. I mean, I think that that's how they operate in this room anyway. You see there in eight. They've got an opportunity to cure there in section 14, a cure period. It's just a, an opportunity that they would, they would know about it before we would act on it. I think that's how we operate traditionally as a commission. And do that anyway, but it's, it may be appropriate to spell that out. I don't have an objection to that. But I do think that it's appropriate that if there is non-compliance, particularly with the land use requirements on that property, that this body, the city commission, have at its sole discretion the decision as to whether or not to continue the rebate in whole or in part.
Any questions to Dave on that? Okay, comment from the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Mark Anderson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. We did meet yesterday, and again, this morning with staff. Appreciate pretty much their time. I appreciate the articulate position that Mr. Corliss has expressed that in this instance, this is a high-profile project. It's a significant NRA rebate at 15 years, 95%. And therefore, in staff's opinion, there are provisions that are put in the proposed NRA agreement that have not been imposed in any other NRA agreement in the city of Lawrence to date that I'm aware of. We appreciate that trade-off. And I'm not here to tell you that we're asking to delete or knock out provisions in the agreement. In fact, the applicant understands the city's position. The only thing is, there's two things missing that we feel does, do need to be addressed in the performance agreement. The first has to do with the phrase alcoholic beverage laws in paragraph 3C. That brings into play a lot of potential issues that we cannot control directly. They're outside the applicant's direct control. They involve potential third parties. And by that, I mean members of the public. And we can't control them. We can do our best to control them, but we can't give you a strict compliance certainty guarantee that there will never, ever be any violation by any member of the public at any time. We just can't. And I think that's, you understand that, or I certainly hope you understand, our position on that. In talking with staff and explaining our position and listening to staff's position that the applicant should be held to a very high standard, again, because this is a 95% 15-year rebate, we sort of struck upon the idea that what we could do is pull that out of paragraph 3C, articulate it separately, and simply say, as to that matter, as to this issue that involves third-party behavior, we absolutely agree, we will do the absolute best we can, again, using an objective legal standard of best efforts. And we will exercise best efforts to comply with all alcoholic beverage laws. That explains that revision. And the other revision Dave touched upon and indicated that he was okay with the concept of a cure period. In other words, due process, an opportunity to at least be notified if we're in non-compliance. You know, this kind of a project is going to have a lot of employees. We're going to create a lot of new jobs. We're going to have employees in and out. If there's a violation, it's conceivable. You could hear about it or know about it before we do. We want an opportunity to at least be notified of any alleged non-compliance issue and a 30-day opportunity to cure. And that is consistent with my review of other NRA agreements in Lawrence. Now, with those two revisions, even as revised, this NRA performance agreement still imposes more conditions on the applicant and sets a higher bar for compliance than any other NRA performance agreement that I found in the city of Lawrence. My understanding is that this commission dealt with this heightened scrutiny issue, the language at the end of paragraph three that Dave read, that you dealt with that issue about a year ago on an NRA project at 100 East 9th Street. And that the applicant at that time had similar objections that I raised to city staff and that this commission agreed to actually delete that language entirely from the NRA performance agreement. We're not asking you to delete it. You did a year ago for another applicant. We're not asking you to do that. We've made nominal, what we consider to be nominal revisions that work around and the issue of non-compliance that's a result of matters outside our control triggered by third parties. We think this is a great project. We look forward to going forward with it. We think with these revisions to the NRA agreement, the NRA performance agreement, that it will be acceptable to our investment group and to our lenders. And I would ask you tonight to support the NRA ordinance and go ahead and pass it on second reading, subject to the revisions that I've proposed. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Anderson? Thanks. Any other public comment? Anyone else? Okay, back to the commission. Jeremy, do you still have copies of, or the information that you had on the numbers that came in on the various taxing units? What was that total figure again versus what we have now?
Well, one moment. It's going to take me a minute.
Well, we're currently collecting, was it $4,909 or some amount like that? And I spent some time over the weekend, you know, looking at those numbers. And it's substantial. And, you know, the big thing here is, is I spent a lot of time looking at it. The...
We're collecting right now $1,194.
That was it.
City, city only.
City gets $11.
That's correct.
The total, the total amount of the taxing units was like $5,000 bucks or something like that, $4,909.
Total amount of the taxing unit is...
Yeah, it didn't matter.
Close to five.
Yeah, it's somewhere in there.
So you're 19% on that?
Well, every...
So 19 again?
4922.
Okay, so I was off a little bit. Truth of the matter is that this is, is something that I think Commissioner Reardon said a couple of weeks ago when this item was before us, you know, something to the effect about, you know, telling about you really support downtown. And I know it wasn't directed at you, but, you know, it was one of those things that I was really doing some soul searching, especially after the fact that I voted for an abatement on this property many, many years ago. This is, this is an opportunity to make one of the last expansions of vacant property along Massachusetts Street in our downtown. I mean, I went up and down that street multiple times. And, you know, there's not a whole lot of empty space left, you know, at all in all of downtown. Our opportunity and the total amount of dollars that are going to be realized, even at the 95%, are pretty incredible. You know, my, every once in a while, is this a dollar incidence issue? Yeah, probably is, you know, in the end. But it's also something about being able to expand the right expansion in that space. You know, and obviously, the Eldridge Hotel makes all the difference in the world here. The big thing is, is that because it's a high-profile, you know, the safeguards that we expect through our performance agreement, you know, there's going to be a balance here, I assume, at the end of the day. Is Mr. Anderson right? Is our staff right? I want to do whatever's necessary to avoid a situation that we have any incidents because of alcohol. And I know that you all do too. So whatever safeguards that we can put in there that we can avoid that situation, that's important to me. The other thing is too, is because it is so high-profile and Nancy and David and others who have been before this commission and, and Nancy, and David, and, and others who have been before this, this commission always refer to it as the historic Eldridge Hotel. Our responsibility is, is to make sure that this has met, you know, our historic guidelines that we have. And, and that, you know, occupancy permit, when that time comes, if it hasn't met it, you know, we will give the time to have it corrected. But, but understand, that's extremely important to me. I guess where I'm heading in, in this thing is, is I can support this request under those parameters. I don't want problems with alcohol, and I wanna make sure that we have met all the guidelines that we have in place. And does this agreement allow us to do that?
I'm not a lawyer, nor a doctor.
You could be.
Nor an engineer, actually, I'm sorry, but I can tell you that there are, there, I, I've read his, and I was just reading again, you know, some of these understandings, and I know our city manager is an attorney, and I think that we need to do whatever makes those assurances, and, and I think the applicant made it clear that they aren't looking to dodge them, they just don't want it to encumber their ability to seek financing or, you know, receive, you know, proper enjoyment of the property and financing thereof. I think that, that is an undue burden. But I don't have a problem burdening things if we're gonna help with tax abatements, but I do wanna make sure they're enforceable and reasonable.
Oh, absolutely. And, and, you know, the, the big thing here is, is, is like I say, you know, it, it takes a lot for me to come up and say, yeah, hell, I was wrong. Okay, but, you know, I, I can admit that.
I tried to gloss right over that, so, just-
I gave you the opportunity.
No, I would never do that.
No, I mean, in all honesty, this project belongs in that vacant space. I, I mean, it does. But because of, of, of the, of the public participation, are, i- i- is the recommended language from the client's counsel strict enough to cover the concerns that I may have?
I, I think you make a good point when you say minimize or try to lessen, but you can't say eliminate. I think that's the key. And, and, and I think this, these particular changes allow the, the correction of the problem. Assuming that it can occur, it allows a reasonable correction of the problem, and it allows a reasonable ability for the city to say, this is gonna be done in the right way. However, things can go wrong, but it gives us a remedy to resolve that conflict. So I feel comfortable with the new words that are there. And I know, last time we were here, we talked about the amounts, and there have been some significant changes with the county going with eighty-five percent. And I've been thinking about this, and one of the things that you said, Mayor, at that time was that you had difficulty with the, the, the fact that it was fifteen years. And I'm wondering if, if the fact that eighty-five percent seems to be a, a reasonable figure for the county, and would ten years be a reasonable amount for the time period for this to agree? And that a ten-year NRA might be more appropriate than a fifteen?
Well, I mean-
Is that something you could support?
Obviously, it's something I could support, but, you know, I think in going back through my notes, and, and I don't wanna speak for the applicant, I mean, but it was pretty clear last time that, you know, anything other than what was requested was not gonna work, so, unless it's changed, I assume it probably hasn't, but, um... Okay, so you got, you got us at fifteen and ninety-five, you got the county at fifteen and eighty-five, and you got the school district at fifteen and ninety-five, but that's only if they get kids that come from this project who are the schools, right? That doesn't count. I guess the biggest thing that I would do is, in looking at this, and... Well, Dave, let me ask something again, and I, and I wanna hear it from you, is, is the language that is proposed by the applicant in the performance agreement, are there safeguards in there to protect us, your best opinion, from, from the alcohol concerns that I have? And, and the performance requirements that we need for the historic guidelines that needs to be followed specifically on this project?
Well, let me, let me tell you why I think so, and Tony needs to chime in as well. I've, I've looked at it, and we've, we've talked a lot, but Tony and I have been talking about this. The, we, the way we've written this is that there's strict compliance with the land use requirements for the property. There's a brick out of place, we're gonna go through the cure period, so you gotta get the brick back in place. I mean, if that's, you, you all will decide whether or not that's a big deal or not, but that's, it's strict compliance. And I, I don't think that would, I don't think that will be an issue, I think it's probably gonna be an outstanding addition. Go back to the, the end of section three. If the company fails to comply in whole or in part with the conditions of the plan, the plan sets out all those requirements of meeting our downtown design guidelines, all of those things. You've got the ability to withhold in whole or in part, or you can terminate. When we talked about this, their concern about the strict compliance language was in recognition of the fact that they, it's gonna be a, a public accommodation, they're gonna have fifty rooms, it's gonna have any number of different activity. And we know that, that things happen in a public accommodation, whether it's a, a restaurant, or doctor's office, or, I was gonna say barbershop, but he's not listening.
I am.
Okay.
I heard it.
Or, or a hotel, or a restaurant, I mean, it happens. So the issue is, how do we put the applicant, the owner, on notice that we want to pay attention to this issue, but recognizing that any establishment that sells alcohol, it, it's possible for them to sell alcohol to someone that has a fake ID. And if that's, if that's a problem, that, the, the law will appropriately prosecute that. If that happens in one instance, does that mean that then they would then be subject to losing the rebate? And what we've tried, I think what Mark's trying to write here is to say, "Company shall implement best practices and use its best efforts to operate the project in substantial compliance with all applicable alcohol beverage laws, et cetera." If you find that they have not, then you can go to the end of section three, still applicable. If the company fails to comply with this agreement, it says that they're going to do it with all of their best efforts, and to be in substantial compliance, then you can say, "We're going to go through the cure period and say, why shouldn't we pull the rebate?" Because you're not in substantial compliance with the alcohol laws, because you've got the most MIPs anywhere in the community, or if there's other issues, there's, whatever would be. Again, not, I don't think the current applicant, but we always have to think about the fact that applicants can sell their property, it can be with someone else, and it's a very prominent location in, in the community. So we've got any number of different other remedies, obviously, we start with law enforcement, we've got other means to deal with that, but the issue is, would we then still have to provide a tax rebate? And I think that if they were not using best practices, and they were not using best efforts to be in substantial compliance in regards to alcohol, they don't have, then, then you'd have that ability to do, to, to consider pulling the rebate. We don't have the strict compliance language there, because they have concerns, and I, I understand that. I'm, if you have strict compliance language there, then that would mean that if there was one MIP, one minor in possession, that a commission could say, "Okay, there's been one minor in possession there, a twenty-year-old got a, a beer, and they weren't supposed to, and they got a ticket, and then we're gonna say, all right, we're gonna pull the rebate." Well, I don't think the people in this room would do that. I would like to put the trust of the commission to do that. Their response is, they wanna trust the document that, that gives them the ability to say, "Well, we've been in substantial compliance, one MIP is not that big a deal." I do think, for the record, that if there's substantial non-compliance with alcohol laws, you've, you've got really a better stay than what we had earlier drafted, because you're gonna be able to point to this and say, "You're in substantial non-compliance with alcohol laws, we're gonna put you under cure, and if you don't, if you don't cure, we're gonna pull the rebate." So, I think we're addressing this issue appropriately here, at least that's, that's my opinion. You could go back to our language, and it would be strict compliance. They, they think that that's gonna be very difficult for them to be able to proceed with the project, if they have that language in regards to alcohol. I think I'm, if, if I can see, I can see, Mark, is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'm, I'm listening.
So, okay.
Yeah.
So, that, so that, that's the issue, I mean, it really is, what level of discretion do you want? And, 'cause I, I think you all should have the maximum amount of discretion that you want.
Commissioner Reardon, you bring up a question about whether I would support a ten-year versus a fifteen-year. Where are you going with that?
Well, thinking about this, my thought is, I feel more comfortable with a ten and a eighty-five, knowing what I know at this point in time.
Okay.
And then, wondering if the commission would agree with that, or disagree, or how we go forward.
I'll ask you a question that you brought up several weeks ago. How important is that downtown slot to fill with this facility?
Well, I think it's very important, and that's why I'm thinking that a ten and eighty-five are really quite a good number. For that, having, talking with different people that I've talked to about finances, and this size of building, and things like that, having that type of information, I think that would be, to me, I'd feel more comfortable with that number.
As opposed to fifteen and-
Ninety-five.
Would be great to, I'd say?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you elaborate, you, so that I can understand what you learned?
The size of the building, the cost of the building, those type of information might support better a ten and an eighty-five, as far as per committee information that this is based on.
So, you wanna give them less money? As opposed to more?
It would be less, yeah.
Yeah, so you, so we started at fifteen and ninety-five, and you wanna go to ten and eighty-five, the same thing as the county did? And I guess we're gonna need a clarification from the county.
Excuse me, Mike, the county approved fifteen and eighty-five, not ten and eighty-five.
They have fifteen and eighty-five. I just question whether, you know, the recommendations are ten and fifty percent.
Okay, I just had the, I just had the vice mayor look at, i- i- if we were to do exactly what the county did, I had the vice mayor just figure out what would the cost to the applicant be? And it would be about forty-nine thousand dollars if we went, if we went fifteen and eighty-five. We would be consistent with the county and the school district does what they were gonna do.
And what would ten and eighty-five do?
I didn't ask him to figure that out.
Oh, sorry.
That, that's gonna take, that's gonna take a little bit.
Do some siphoning? Okay.
I can't come up with that on the fly. Was that in your analysis? I don't think that was, I don't think ten and eighty-five was in your analysis.
It's what we saw at the per committee.
No, I don't-
I think this was done, in the supplemental data, I'd done some comparisons. And if you took the comparison of the first scenario, which is all taxing jurisdictions at an eighty-five percent versus the original scenario of all taxing jurisdictions at a ninety-five percent, the difference was two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, fifty-three dollars.
For all jurisdictions?
Correct.
Can you break out our jurisdiction?
Britt, I'm not seeing that. I'm not seeing a ten-year eighty-five percent. I see a ten-year ninety-five percent.
I think it's on the last page of the supplemental data.
Okay, let me go there, hang on.
I have a rebate, NRA rebate amount summary chart, and I've got it broken down by jurisdiction, and I have the original request, all taxing jurisdictions at a fifteen-year ninety-five percent. That's the original scenario, all taxing jurisdictions at eighty-five percent. That was the alternate scenario one. Alternate scenario two is the county at eighty-five percent and all others at ninety-five percent.
But scenario one is taxing jurisdictions at eighty-five percent, but that's a fifteen-year, right? That's not a ten-year.
Yes, that is correct.
Fifteen and what?
I don't believe we have, I don't believe we have a breakdown between the ten-year and the-
Right, and that's, that's what, yeah, Roy.
This is just a breakdown between the different percentage rebate participation.
We never saw the ten-year eighty-five percent. We never saw that number, that's my point.
But the number that you just gave me is that the city would, the, the city would not give back forty-nine thousand dollars? We would not-
That's correct.
Okay, so we-
Essentially, twenty, twenty-seven-hundred, twenty-eight-hundred dollars the first year, and thirty-eight-hundred dollars in year fifteen. Total of forty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-two dollars.
Over the fifteen-year period?
Over the fifteen-year period.
Terry, what do you think of that?
Well, like I said, I, you know, we, we had the, the, when you stray from the ten-year and fifty percent, we go up to eighty-five percent. I feel more comfortable with that number.
Fifteen, eighty-five, or the?
Ten and eighty-five. I still think that provides a good incentive for them to build, and provides appropriate use of tax incentives to encourage this particular spot to, to develop.
So, the only question I have is, I don't know what the number is, and I'm so uncomfortable making that, I don't, I, I wouldn't, I would wanna see what that is before I agree with you or disagree, 'cause I don't know what, what the number is.
Britt, we need, we need ten and, ten and eighty-five percent, ten-year eighty-five percent. And, and if you can bring that figure around somehow, we, we, we wanna know that number.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote any number until I see it.
Does any member of the applicant have that number available?
Didn't you say it wasn't on any of that?
No.
Nancy, you ever come in? Do you have that?
I don't. This is second reading. Good, good evening, I guess I should say, Nancy Longhurst, she's our manager of the Eldridge. Thank you very much for where we are, and we're happy to be here again tonight on second reading, which at one point was just to be on the consent agenda, and just to go through, and I think we had done a good job of presenting the situation for the hotel and what we needed. I think we did a really good job of that, and that hasn't changed. I'll, I'll, I'll read you something that I had written, that I just wanted to address a couple of things. Is that all right, Mayor?
I'll give you a couple minutes.
Okay, no, it's very short. But on February the eighteenth, I did attend, as you know, the county commission meeting. After presentations were completed, the following occurred as to why the county went, went with the eighty-five percent abatement over fifteen years. It was a great discussion, we had great support from the county commissioners. Fabulous support. Commissioner Jim Thorey verbally said he was supportive of the ninety-five percent abatement from the county at fifteen years. That cost benefit ratio was point nine six. Commissioner Mike McGon verbally said he was supportive of a seventy-five percent abatement for the county at fifteen years. The cost benefit was one-point-two-two. Commissioner Nancy Thelman verbally said she was extremely supportive of our project, but asked the commissioners to split the difference at eighty-five percent abatement for the county at the fifteen- at the 15 years. The cost benefit had not been run in the pro forma for the 85%. The county made the decision in order to get the county's cost benefit ratio in line with their policy. The commissioners asked us, decided to do a compromise of the 85% to meet the ratio. So, there's a difference here. This is about the county's ratio and the reason why they did it. We were fine for the city. They asked me if I could live with that. I said yes, because this was the, this was only, and this is very important, this is only as it relates to the county portion and if the city and school district and the state stayed at 95%. The county decision was based only on property tax and not the new county sales tax revenue in the amount of $118,000. The Eldridge NRA yields the best return of all the approved NRAs for the city, hands down. We did a really good job of sharing this information with you. Our project does generate approximately $9 million of new revenue for the general public over the next 20 years. I don't see how that could even be a factor in your, you know, wondering if it's not a good deal or not for the city. This is, this is amazing, and this is going to be a great project for Lawrence, Kansas, and for the Eldridge Hotel, the historic Eldridge Hotel, which I'm very passionate about. This is my second time to be back there as a general manager. I was in the eighties. So, this is something that I believe in. We all believe in this, wholeheartedly, and I just feel that we need to, this is like, this is second reading. To us, this is, this is done, and I really, really ask for your support tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Nancy. Do you have that number?
I don't think that analysis was fair.
So, can I, I mean, my sense is that moving it to 10 years and having it be 85%, you know, that this is, you know, Commissioner Riordan is speaking to the, the 10-year 50% threshold that was passed by the commission back in 2011. And, and I have, you know, I completely understand where you're at in relationship to, you know, wanting to, to hold fast, more so to have at least one of those things be compliant. I mean, I think that, I think that, you know, if, if we're going back to the beginning of this project, for me, I would say, let's have that conversation, rerun the numbers, um, and, and do it that way. I'm not comfortable at this point, um, recommending not only five years less, but also 10% less when we've already done first reading. I think if we can settle on 15 years and 85%, um, you know, I, I feel comfortable with that number, because it's really only a difference of $49,000. And, and just looking at the, the return on investment, it's still somewhere north of 580%. Um, and so, you know, this is a, this is a large capital investment in, in downtown. Um, you know, I know a lot's been talked about, how much do we value N-FIL development? Um, and, and I think we have had that public conversation, and I think we have discussed how we don't want a whole lot of sprawl to take place. Mayor, you very correctly and astutely pointed out that there really aren't any vacant lots in downtown that are waiting to be developed right now. Um, and so, so in the grand scheme of a $190 million budget, we're not, we're talking about 40, we're talking about $2,700 in a year. It's, it's not a lot of money. I don't think it's gonna make or break the project. 10 years, 85% would be significantly, would be significantly less. Um, just based upon my own anecdotal, you know, just quick figure numbers here. Um, so, you know, I, I would, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay?
Sure.
That we move to approve the Eldridge NRA for 15 years at 85%. Um, and, uh, that we move forward with the, the suggested changes that we've all talked about in relationship to the performance agreement.
And those changes as brought forward by the applicant? Or which ones?
The, the, the ones that staff would be comfortable with.
Yeah, the ones, yeah, that you said that you guys would be fine with.
Okay, so it's the ones that the applicant brought forward late this afternoon, the revised ones?
Correct, what you have here is Barbara Emerson, applicant, suggested changes to performance agreement, added 32415. That still provides for the authority of the commission to alter the amount, um, with an appropriate cure period, um, if there is not compliance with basically the land use and public safety requirements, and if there's not substantial compliance with the alcohol beverage law requirements.
Okay, so 15, 85% along with the suggested changes, um, and, and you believe that there's the safeguards, you know, in the alcohol, as you said earlier, so?
Well, I, I think that it's, it's, it's a fair way to proceed. If, if you're gonna sell alcohol, you're gonna have some of those issues, but if you've got substantial non-compliance, if you've got a, a history of issues there, I think we're gonna be able to point to that section and say, we're gonna have a hearing about talking about your rebate.
Okay, and then?
Can I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The, the real issue here is, is Perch chickened out with this conversation, and, and when we talked about the, the clawbacks in the performance agreement, we really don't have a policy. So, what this is going to be is it's going to be really driven by who the city feels like it wants to do business with in a sense, or comfortable with, on the basis of who comes up here and suggests revisions. I mean, I remember when Bill Fleming came up here for the Ninth and New Hampshire project, he flat out said, you gotta take it out, period. And then we had this, you know, we had a conversation about that. Um, and now this development group is not suggesting that we take it out, but alter the words. I really think that we need to, to have a robust conversation at Perch in, in relationship to how we want to execute these performance agreements and what sort of standards we want to have, and we have to have, a- as a city commission, the integrity to stick to it. Um, and, you know, I, I, I completely understand the, the not wanting to be controlled or, you know, by virtue of pulling tax abatements, by, by virtue of the actions of a third party. I don't know what the fine balance is there. I don't know, maybe it'd be great to, to figure out what other communities do and, and what the industry standard in relationship to all that is, but I feel like the, the Perch group, we need to have some more conversations around actually setting a good policy, rather than just kind of going and changing it every time we have somebody who wants some sort of a tax incentive. And, um, that's, that's on us to exercise that sort of direction and get back down to them, but that would be my recommendation, too. Um, so, so, um, I'll probably wait to make a, a second motion for us to refer the policy back down to Perch in relationship to performance agreements, because I think that Dr. Riordan might support that, uh, sending that back down to Perch. But we can't chicken out in having that conversation. I mean, if you look at the minutes from the last meeting, it was just kind of like, well, we can't really do that, but we probably should, but, oh, we're out of time. And, and that's how that conversation went down, and, and we need to give it some more attention than that. I don't know whether that's a study session, I don't know, I mean, you guys remember the meeting, right? We didn't really, I'm not trying to throw, I'm not throwing anybody, any of you under the bus, I'm just saying, the Perch group, we, we chickened out in having that conversation, and we need to not chicken out in having that conversation. It's not fair for us to, to constantly be shifty and cagey and change based upon, you know, what attorneys are okay with and what city staff can live with. That's not fair to them, it's not fair to us, you, you know. We have to do a better job as policymakers of setting good policy.
Okay, so, second reading, if we make any changes to that, we can make them tonight? It doesn't have to go back through any process?
See the attorney shaking her head, yes.
Okay, sign off, um, once it's, uh, printed in the paper, it's a done deal, right?
Right.
We can go down without?
I'm sorry, sir.
We can go down without having to go back to a second reading?
That's correct. You can amend it at, at this point on second reading. What, what I do not know, and I don't want to slow the process down, if you are agreeing with what the county did, the school district is at 95% in 15 years, correct? Okay, I'm just pointing that out.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table of 15-year 85% with the language that has been recommended, um...
By staff and the applicant.
Staff and the applicant, okay? Discussion on that motion.
You've calculated the sum?
$49,000.
You did that?
Over 15.
How, how confident are you in your assessment of that number? Should I audit it? Audit your number?
Please do it twice.
Okay.
That's the city's portion.
Yeah.
City's portion only.
I understand.
And all it is, is it's, it's the 95%, the $27,351, essentially minus 10%, that's the difference, because it's the same time period.
Mm-hmm.
It's just 10% less, which equates to 49,121 over 15 years.
Okay.
But yes, audit it twice.
Okay. And again, Nancy's number that she gave, less that $49,000 over 15 is still correct, right? How much we're gonna bring in?
Well, we'd actually bring in $49,000 more over 15 years. Yeah, which, yeah. And that's just in property tax revenue, it doesn't affect the sales tax and, and, and guest tax revenues.
Dave, do we have, uh, plans in place, uh, on, during the construction time, make sure all that's gonna work with parking and all?
We, we still, um, are, I think, owed a, um, a site plan that would then have a, uh, construction, uh, phasing and, uh, construction, uh, mobilization plan. Um, we've had, you know, there's discussions about, you know, using some of the portion along Massachusetts Street. You know, one of the great things about Mass Street is, is that we build right up to the sidewalk, and build right up to, in many cases, the alley, and right up next to buildings. Well, there's not a whole lot of room to store the cranes and the materials and all those types of things, so we're gonna have to have some, um, good discussions with the, the applicant, and then come back to the, the commission and make sure that we're involving all the adjacent property owners that will be impacted by the disruption on Mass Street, disruption in the alley, perhaps disruption in the, the parking lot there at, uh, Seventh and Vermont. I mean, those things have been discussed, but nothing has been to the point where we're ready to start talking with you all about that. They'll, they'll have to come back, and it's probably, uh, I thought I saw Paul here earlier, 18-month project, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, so, it's, you know, we're gonna be, so I, I'm not answering the question, I'm just giving you some of the issues we're gonna have to deal with as we help this project along.
And I only bring it up because I know that those are gonna be issues that are gonna come along, you know, in the future, so, um, well, you know, again, based on, you know, the information that Jeremy ran before and staff has run, you know, the, the numbers on this, this project are really to the positive, uh, of the city, and that's the only one I'll speak to, so, um, the 85%, it looks like something that, you know, can garner support, and I guess I would go along with that.
A lot of switching going on, it's good, dynamic, yeah.
Well, I, I, I mean, you know, and, and I appreciate Commissioner Riordan's, uh, you know, study of the issue, and, and, and I know that, um, you know, we got the policy in place, and that's what the policy's for.
Yeah, and it's a good point.
Hell, Mike, you and I was sitting here, we, I think we wrote it.
Somebody made it.
Yeah.
I voted for it, I guess, so...
But, um, you know, we'll, we'll probably have that discussion in the future. The only thing that I'm saying here is that, is this the right project at that location? And is this incentive, uh, the mechanism that can make this happen? And, um, i- it appears to be that it is. Um, it makes probably sense. And it does give, it, it does take into consideration the concerns that I have when it comes to, um, you know, when the occupancy permit time comes, if, if there's anything out of line we can take care of, and that the alcohol issue can be resolved. A motion to approve ordinance number, uh, to amend on second reading ordinance number 9086, that the rebated amount would, amounts would be a 15-year term at an 85% level, and that the, um, language on the, the authorizing the city manager to execute the performance agreement between the city and the applicant be based on the staff and applicant's recommendation, the language in that. That was a motion.
Oh, so there's a motion on the floor?
There's a motion on the floor by the vice mayor.
Okay.
I asked for discussion of that motion.
And I have no further information to add, so we need somebody to second it.
I'm looking for someone.
I'll second it.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any, any other comments?
No.
The motion made in second to adopt, uh, ordinance number, amended ordinance number 9086 on second reading at a 15% 85% level, and to authorize the city manager to execute the performance agreement between the city and the applicant based on the recommendation of staff and the applicant. That language is proposed. Motion was made by Vice Mayor Farmer, seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Passes four to one, Commissioner Riordan in decentury. Or three to one, I'm sorry. Okay, that's that. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is to consider a motion to recess into executive session for approximately 30 minutes for the purpose of discussing possible property acquisition. The justification for the executive session is to keep possible terms and conditions of property acquisition confidential at this time. I would, excuse me, excuse me.
20's probably enough.
20 minutes?
Yeah.
Or 10?
Okay, so, let me re, what?
I, I would also add, I would like us to give staff direction to place on Perch's agenda.
Oh.
So, I would move that we direct staff to place on Perch's agenda a look at performance agreements as a whole, and also the city's policies in relationship to tax incentives that it provides that were passed back in 2011 for a study session or several meetings for consideration by, uh, the city commission at some point prior to end of summer-ish.
Well, are, are we asking, is your motion asking for Perch to hear it?
For Perch to hear it.
Okay, so, they'll make their own?
That is correct.
Deal as to whether or not it's a study session or an action item?
That's correct.
Okay, um, okay, we got a motion to refer this item to Perch. Okay, there's a motion made second by Vice Mayor Farmer, seconded by Commissioner Riordan. Any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Had items referred to Perch? Not for Thursday, okay?
We'd put it at the very end and see, see if you have time to talk to them, I'm sorry.
Okay, so even though it's written 30 minutes on this next item, we can change it to another length of time?
You can change it to the length of time, you, what you do not want to, yeah, right. I didn't, Mayor, I don't know if you wanted, if you had public comment before, I mean, you can, I don't know if you wanted, or you decide, sorry.
No, we're gonna, there's an order here. Um, thank you. Thank you. Sorry. I made the agenda. I entertain, okay. The item that is considered motion to recess into executive session for approximately twenty minutes for the purpose of discussing possible property acquisition, the justification for the executive session is to keep possible terms and conditions of property acquisition confidential at this time. I would entertain a motion to recess into executive session for approximately thirty, or twenty minutes.
Move.
Motion made in second made by Shun, seconded by Reardon. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're in executive session for twenty minutes. Next item on the agenda is public comment. General public comment. Here's...
I'll have mine here.
Okay. Future agenda items.
Mayor, it's my understanding you're gonna be elsewhere next Tuesday?
Let's don't tell anybody then. Go wait.
Anarchy, chaos.
I need to talk to my wife about this for...
Okay, all right, there's a possibility, so, um...
I'm here, huh?
Scott's got some information about rental licensing and inspection, you see that, that memo. I think Brandon's got the taxi cab license, um, information ready to go. We may or may not have that next week, and we'll probably have a few other items, because we know that April, the 7th and the 14th are not gonna be heavy agenda items because of the election. On the 7th, we're still gonna accept bond and note bids on the 7th, and then the 14th, we traditionally just have the changing of the guard.
Did we, did we talk about moving the time of the April 7th meeting up earlier?
I don't know that you've made a decision in that regard, but I think you may have talked about it. I don't know that you've made a direction, and it'd be appropriate to do that now if you want to. We do need to have a meeting, because we are doing our debt sale.
I mean, the only, the only thing we could really do is move it to like 5 o'clock, so...
Yeah.
I don't know if that...
Not planning on having anything else on the regular agenda other than that on the 7th, so it'll be a quick meeting.
Okay. Anybody wanna go at 5 o'clock?
That's fine.
Is that okay?
But I did wanna say next week I'm gonna have my capital improvement presentation on the agenda, and then just gonna daylight the plan for the police facility.
Well, if everything goes together and I'm not here, I apologize now, but I'm sure that you'll give, bring me up to date.
We'll see.
We will.
We will, okay. Commission items, oh, you just did. Anybody else have commission items? Okay. Calendar. Nothing? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
I have a motion made in second to adjourn, um...